A call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on November 18th. We'll start with our work session. I will start by asking if councilors have any or staff have any changes to present on review of agenda and items on consent.
Mayor, if I may. So one of the work session items, the last work session item was merely because of a consent agenda item that you all have tonight on resolution number 3180. If council doesn't have any questions on that, we can eliminate that from the work session. It was mainly just as a hold for you all.
I'm fine. I've reviewed the packet info.
Counselor?
I am fine. I reviewed.
Okay. 3180. Okay, we are all briefed on that with a detail in our packet then. Thank you. Any counselor concerns? All right. Moving into our pre-council work session, we'll start with childcare in Wilsonville with Mr. Lorenzen.
Thank you. And we do have a guest. Gina, if you want to join us, please. So we're going to truncate to the extent we can, being mindful of the time. At the same time, want to make sure we do this topic justice. It's been a while since we've talked about it. For the record, my name is Matt Lorenzen. I'm the city's economic development manager. And Gina, could you introduce yourself to the council?
Yeah, my name is Regina Hee, and I own Building Blocks Early Learning Center in Wilsonville. So I have three schools over by Old Town. Old Town by Fred Myers.
Thank you. So just to recap, in 2023, the council at its semi, excuse me, biannual goal setting, set this goal number 10 to convene a childcare partner consortium in order to better understand the challenges facing childcare businesses in the city and just the provision of childcare more generally in the city, and to try to work toward identifying actions or programs, anything that could be done within the council's purview to try and improve circumstances, recognizing that this was both a challenge for families and a challenge for employers as a workforce issue. Council President Ockervall has been our liaison, and we're very grateful for the time and energy and thought that she has contributed to our seven meetings, the insights that she's brought, and so just want to make sure that that's recognized. Thank you. Our meetings have been largely exploratory, and by that I mean to say while there was structure, there was also many free-form conversations where that evolved organically where these group of business owners were able to compare notes and speak with one another candidly about the challenges they face in a setting and an environment where they don't normally do that. They're operating sort of siloed, doing their own thing. And so there was a lot of value in allowing these organic conversations to evolve. I learned a lot. I think Council President Ockervall learned a lot, and I believe the members of the consortium learned from one another. You see in your staff report, a list of the providers in the city, and about half of those were able to participate on our consortium. We identified basically three interdependent challenges, and I'm borrowing that word from Council President Ockervall. She had helped us to better understand these sort of interdependent feedback loops that are occurring within the childcare system, both locally but also all the way to the national level. There's many of them, but the core feedback loops and the negative feedback loops that our operators are facing have to deal primarily with staffing challenges, the high operating costs, which are to some degree just a function of operating a business, but also layered upon by the regulatory environment that faces childcare providers, and the great lengths and expenses sometimes that have to be exhausted in order to meet those regulatory requirements, and by extension, facilities. And citing a childcare business is very challenging, again, for regulatory reasons. There's a certain number of, Gina can tell us maybe more about this, but fixtures and classroom orientations and outdoor play area and the size of it and so on and so forth. There were some additional discoveries that came forth as well that were a little bit more nuanced. We discovered that while there are a lot of conversations taking place at the state level, at the national level about the childcare crisis, privately operated childcare businesses don't have a unified voice or a place at that table in many, many circumstances, in an alarming number of circumstances. And we recognize that early on as an issue and have tried to lend the city's lobby support as well as staff support to various work groups that exist in the county and in the state to bring that voice forward, and we'll continue to do that. We also learned that a program called ERDC or Employment Related Daycare is a pretty popular and effective program, but woefully underfunded and well below its capacity to do good. And if it were to be expanded, there could be some really positive outcomes. It might not be a complete cure-all, but certainly a lot of progress could be made. And these discoveries were made throughout the course of our exploratory meetings. So the real takeaway here, at least for me, and we also had a bit of a book club in our meetings and read this book called Crawling Behind: America's Childcare Crisis and How to Fix It. There's pretty broad consensus within our consortium as well as nationally that a major subsidy of some sort is needed in order to support families to bring about a mixed delivery system. And by that, I don't mean, well, what is meant by that is that it could be a combination of childcare centers, home-based childcare businesses, stay-at-home parents. There could be, come in many, many different forms, but that monetary resources are needed to support families in order to bring that healthy ecosystem into fruition. So I want to pause there and invite Gina into the conversation. I invited her here because, of course, I've learned a lot, but what better way to hear about this than from someone who isn't themselves a childcare business? So I just want to ask some questions and allow Gina the opportunity to respond, and then we'll conclude the presentation by seeking the council for further direction on this goal and issue. So Gina, you mentioned your schools are located in the Old Town part of Wilsonville. How long have you been in business?
20 years in Wilsonville. 20 years of Building Blocks.
And why do you continue to do business in Wilsonville?
So I started my school many years ago in Charbonneau, in an old historical home, on 5,000 square foot home, two and a half acres, and then moved to Wilsonville in 2017. Decided to go commercial for financial reasons. Can't hear me? Sorry. Decided to go commercial for financial reasons, and so I moved into Wilsonville at that time. And the reason I chose Wilsonville is because half my family's in Charbonneau, you're in the Wilsonville city limits, but you're also in Camby School District. So I had to kind of make a decision on which school district was the best for me to follow, and I chose Wilsonville because Wilsonville Westland Schools line up with my philosophy really strongly, as well as the parents. The parents in Wilsonville are amazing and very intellectually driven, and they understood the philosophy and what we were doing, and so I moved here for that reason.
Thank you. So we know that the pandemic was a huge challenge to many businesses of many types, childcare in particular, but what other challenges over the years have affected your ability to operate profitably? We recognize that you're providing a public service, but you're also a business.
Yeah.
So what's affected your ability to operate profitably over the years and at the same time meet your own expectations and the expectations of the families that you serve?
It was tough because I taught in public school for several years in Woodburn and in Oregon City, and I made the decision that my heart was in early childhood education because that's where I could make a difference. That's where I could do more parent education. That's where I could meet the needs of young children, which is the most critical age of development. And so I decided to go ahead and resign and start my own business. It was, the hardest challenge was I went seven years without an income, and I did that because I believe in it. I was offered three jobs in Woodburn when I left there. I could have taught, you know, any of those levels, and I chose to do this because it was so important to me to serve children and families. And so I did that, and then I ended up going seven years without an income just to build the school and breaking even. And it wasn't until about the eighth year that I really started making a decent income. And I think that's the hardest challenge. And that is still today. We break even with me making the amount of money that I should be making as a master level teacher and for the amount of years I'm barely making what I should be making. And my teachers are making more income than most preschools and child cares, and they're getting benefits. But at the end of the day, I am breaking even every month regardless of having three schools in Wilsonville right now.
So shifting back toward the consortium that we've convened, can you just tell us a little bit, tell the council a little bit about your experience as a member of the consortium? What have you found helpful and just kind of elaborate on that a little bit?
It's been really helpful because we don't have any voice anywhere, state politics, federal, I mean, anywhere. We don't have a voice. And within the preschool community, we're competitive. We compete against each other. So coming to the consortium was really nice because that was all set aside, and it gave us a chance to really start communicating and collaborating about what's working and what's not. It was a breath of fresh air for me, and I know we learned a lot about, you know, what was, what we were all experiencing, what was working and what wasn't working. And I think that's what we all came away from, was what wasn't working and how can we make change? We know how to make change. We know in early childhood how to make change. We just don't know how to get other people to see it. And I think that's what this consortium did for me.
So with that in mind then, what would you like to see the consortium achieve moving forward? And do you believe there's a way that the council might be able to support that?
Yeah, to continue to support us. There's several things that need to happen. First, we need some kind of financial support. Families are struggling. Families are having to quit working. Two parent families that have great incomes and good careers are having to stop working to stay home because they can't afford childcare. And that's devastating to them because most of them have built their careers, and now they're having to stop. The other thing is just connecting with the district and the community. We aren't connecting. There's, nobody's asking us what's happening, even down in Salem. They're not asking us what's happening. They're asking everybody that's on the board down there what's happening and not coming to us, and we're the ones that know what's happening. Our schools are not full. We do not have waiting lists in every single school like everybody thinks we do. We need them to hear us, and I think that that's one thing Wilsonville's always been a step ahead on, is listening to the community, listening to the families and the parents. And I think the parents are in our schools. They're telling us, well, we need to be able to communicate with you guys. And finance is as critical. ERDC is critical. However, we lose money with every ERDC family because we give scholarships for the extra that they don't pay. You know, there's these things that nobody else knows, the state doesn't know, that we do know. And so I think that communication is huge, and that's one thing the consortium's done for us, at least with Matt and Christine, but not on a broader scale. So finances and communication and connecting and collaborating with the districts, kindergarten. I mean, they come into our school once a year to do an assessment on a child when they, before they go to kindergarten, but they know nothing that's going on for the first four years that they're with us. So that needs to happen.
So as a last question, and maybe you've already answered it, in which case maybe we should just move forward, but I'm wondering what you see as, in this case, in this context, local government's role in the solution, knowing that our ability to financially support families is quite limited at the local level? You mentioned communication, you mentioned organization and presenting a unified voice. Is there anything else that you feel like the council might be able to do to support either the broader effort for childcare at the state level or at the city level?
Collaborate. Finance is critical because we don't get any support whatsoever. You know, public school does. Every single other program does get finance. We don't get any, any kind of financial support. But I think that the other thing that's really important is that we're not connecting with the school districts. We're not connecting with the city. Nobody knows what's happening in early childhood education, and early childhood is where it's at when it comes to, if you want to make change, that's where it has to happen. If you want to make change, it has to be with babies to five, because after five, you've only got a couple more years to barely affect a child. But birth to five, if you want to repair that brain, if they've got special needs, it happens birth to five. The brain is a muscle. We can fix it if we have the time, but not when they're in kindergarten to second grade. We can't do anything then. We need it now. We need to collaborate together. We need to collaborate with the district. We need Matt and us to start getting our voices heard. The families will listen to us, but they're not going to listen to other people when it comes to start money for taxes or whatever it might be. The families will listen to us. They could, they trust us. I guess that's the biggest thing, I think, some way to start helping get more support financially, more support with our special needs kids. We're swamped. We're swamped. And Education Services Division doesn't have enough money. They don't have enough resources. I had 12 children last year. I was only served by them for, with four because I live 15 minutes from Woodburn. So Marion County can't cross over, Clackamas County, there's so much politics that nobody else knows but us. So we've got to start communicating somehow, and I think this is the beginning of it.
Okay. Thank you. So trying to conclude, I do have some of the survey results. So we did a survey in 2022, and we brought some new questions forward in 2024 to try and get a clearer picture, a more specific picture around the circumstances families are facing in Wilsonville. In the name of time, I'm afraid I probably have to skip through these, but you have the full results in your staff report and would encourage you to take a look at those. Again, I guess I'll just reiterate that the main takeaways here are that the things preventing families from accessing childcare services primarily are high cost, which is a function of the high cost of operating the business in the first place. And these are all interrelated, insufficient supply and availability, and then just the schedule and availability of the hours that care is available. I have some qualitative responses that I'll have to forego as well, but they, those are also in the staff report, and I think some of the most meaningful data that we collected was through those free form responses as opposed to just the statistical data. What we would like some direction on tonight with regard to the consortium, but maybe more broadly the council goal that was set, is where we go from here. I think we have a fairly good grasp of the issues, but what do we do with that now, especially given the limited capacity, human capacity and financial capacity of the city? So there's certainly other options that can be explored, but I've presented a few here. The county has CDBG, Community Development Block grant funding. Sorry about that. That we plan to pursue, and if awarded, that funding would go to a third-party contractor that would provide technical assistance primarily to home-based childcare businesses. So this would be no expense to the city, but uncertain what the outcome will be. This is an option. It would just require staff time. One thing that we have done in our meetings is taken a very, very high-level look at what kind of revenue could be generated by an incremental local payroll tax in order to generate dedicated funding to support families seeking childcare services. We could continue to explore that if that was council's direction. A more specific example of something that could be done is related to the former YMCA space at Village at Main, currently empty, and have received a handful of inquiries of businesses that would like to locate there, expressing various concerns. A recurring theme is also, is the city incentivizing in some way the cost of starting up a new childcare business in this space? And I respond at this time, no. Finally, we can continue this conversation with the new council if this council feels that they don't want to do anything with it right now. And of course, we're open to other options as well. So with that, I'll leave it to the council for questions and direction.
I actually have just a couple of questions. I'll keep them brief. You mentioned that you don't have a waiting list? Is that correct?
Well, in the baby, okay, so in the baby school I do now, but in the other school, no. And that's what everybody thinks that everybody has a waiting list, and that's one thing we all have talked about in our consortium is that there's not waiting lists because parents, so the turnover is so great, parents can't afford it. And so they end up, throughout the year, we have this constant roller coaster of people coming and going. The other thing on this YMCA issue, it, in '26, there's new regulations coming down that every single child has to be outside for an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon. We don't, half our schools are going to, half our child cares are going to go down with those regulations if they don't change them. We don't have it. Nobody has it. Nobody has playgrounds connected to their programs, but me and Mentographics, I don't, and then some private ones, but they don't have them.
Just one other point that I just wanted to call out because I was surprised by it in the report is that when I look at the survey respondents, the second largest preference for them is a nanny, which was quite a disconnect. So they're looking for some type of very specific in-home care that has nothing to do with any pub, private or publicly held institutional or business, commercial type of childcare. So is that a national trend or is that just something unique to Wilsonville where the preference was to have a nanny?
You might have insight there. I don't know the answer to that.
That was, that was a big call out for me.
I think it's, first, I think it's actually Wilsonville, but this is my gut, and the reason I'm saying this is because of the families I have in Villbois. They would prefer to have their families at home in that area, and they can afford it. Nannies are very expensive, very expensive, because they're at home, but most people can't afford them. But I think that the families in those communities would prefer that because then their children are there. Some of them work from home, part-time at least, and we're, it's a very educated community. And so half of them are working at work, some of them are working in, you know, it's that kind of a situation. So a nanny would be ideal for them.
Yeah, I was just wondering, more or less, was that more of a national trend or is that just specific to Wilsonville?
Yeah, I called this out in the staff report, but not here tonight. We had a disproportionate number of respondents that were high-income earners, and I think that that translates into that same.
Great. I think that that's important to take into consideration when looking at the report as a whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My main takeaway is there, and I did call this in the staff report as well, is that a mixed delivery system is really critical. We're not talking about creating a new zero-to-five public education system. We're talking about some sort of a voucher system that would allow families the ability to choose the solution that suits them and their unique circumstances.
What is the relationship or what is Wilsonville gaining from the Clackamas County Childcare Consortium, if anything?
Well, what is Wilsonville gaining? I can tell you what Wilsonville is contributing.
Okay.
I participate, I try and represent the voices of our consortium members on that C5 group, Clackamas County Childcare Coalition. They, what we have gained though, I think, is moving closer to a unified voice. They've produced a policy concept that they're starting to bring to legislators in Salem to identify mainly the need that exists. They haven't quite gotten to the point of identifying what a solution looks like. They've tried to put a monetary figure around it, but there's not a lot of meat in that document with regard to where the funding would come from and what the system in its end state might actually look like. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done there. But the C5 Coalition has at least organized this conversation, is starting to bring it to policymakers, and we've participated in that process.
Yeah, I would just say that it feels like the work that's being done by C5 is, it's a long timeline, right? Because, because it's some, some big ideas and some more, like looking at the whole structure of the system and what needs to change, and those are heavy lifts, right? So I think it's been great for the city to be involved and included in that work and contributing, but I also see sometimes, and I don't want to be, you know, critical of anybody's contributions, but having that personal connection and having the conversations between the providers and that's been a huge gain, I think, of like Wilsonville's consortium group that I don't see playing out on county level or state level or national level or, you know? And really, it's going to take, this, this is a huge problem, and it's going to take lifts on every one of those levels.
Right.
So that's, that's why I see tremendous value for, for Wilsonville to, to remain engaged and remain working on this topic. You know, you spoke so eloquently of like the importance of the birth to five years and the early childhood years, and I think the lens of that this, this contributes to parents and caregivers being able to be employed, but also we are preparing our future workforce
Absolutely.
of what happens between zero and five. And we are preparing our future kids to go through Westland Wilsonville School District and the resources that they will demand and crave to be successful in their academic careers and then later their employment years as well. All of that needs to be considered as far as what we're, we're doing. It's not, there's the short-term game and the long-term game on this one. So it's important that we play both.
Hey, Matt?
Thank you.
Has your local group, our local consortium, engaged Representative Neuron?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
She's attended, I believe, two of our meetings and has had a staff person maybe at one additional. Okay. So she's aware of the issues and challenges?
So, I think just in the interest of time, this is a really good report. I believe you're asking for our feedback on this. These, I mean, it sounds, I can't, I imagine we're all in favor of you continuing to pursue the Community Development Block grant. Everybody's in favor of that. Studying the revenue capacity, I mean, that is going to be a decision of the next council, but I think, I think that's a good idea.
Well, I would say on my behalf, as a continuing member of council, I will continue to support this as one of our council goals. So I think that this is a great starting point.
Thank you. And directing staff to recommend a grant incentive to offer, what you're saying on the number three, my only concern there is, I'm really, I know that we, there's interest or I feel there's, there's value in looking at some move-in grants for this and other businesses. And I think maybe the sticking point is, how do you balance that with your existing businesses? So that is something to study. So is that enough for today? And I really thank you for this huge amount of work that came. Any other comments on this, Counsel Barrett?
Also, from what I got from your report tonight, it sounds like communications is a big deal. So if there, if you could come back with some suggestions of communications between the school district or the businesses that might be able to help supplement the financing for daycare, that would be something I'd like to hear more about.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think that's sufficient direction. Sounds at any rate like we're not going to wind things down. We're going to continue pressing forward. We'll look at a new calendar date to bring more information back to the future council.
And one, one more thing quick before, because it's my chance to say one more thing on this. I mean, I have really appreciated being able to engage in this group, and I would love to continue because it's, it's so important and I see so much value in it. But one piece for you all to hear too, and everyone else in the room, is the issue of the workforce, supporting the workforce specifically for this industry is huge, and it feels like it's getting missed. And when it gets missed and the other pieces are getting supported, it actually ends up coming back around and hurting the entire system. So I would love for us to figure out a way to, to help support the workforce in this industry because opening new facilities without a workforce isn't going to get you very far. And, and, you know, having an unstable workforce, we see that actually in the survey responses from the parents. They're feeling that. And it doesn't help with the, the cost model if you really look into how the, the operations of the business and what that does when you lose classroom sizes and the ratios and all of the intricacies that, you know, that have to happen with this industry. The workforce is, is a linchpin in this. So I hope that we can look at what, what could we do to support that workforce piece?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great closing comments from our city council champion, Council President Ockervall, and we have on childcare, absolutely. And we have some additional champions going forward. Thank you.
I just want to thank the council. It's been a pleasure to work under your leadership. Thank you.
And thank you for all of your time.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to item two, which is Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission Five-Year Action Plan and the Annual One-Year Implementation Plan with Ms. Valentine.
Erica Valentine, the Arts and Culture Program Coordinator for the city, here to talk about the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission's Five-Year Action Plan and Annual One-Year Implementation Plan. So for my presentation, I'll go over some basics about the ACHC, talk about their past accomplishments, upcoming projects, and then just as a reminder, the item is on consent on the agenda later on this evening for resolution number 3174. So the ACHC advises the council on recommendations that are outlined in the Arts, Culture and Heritage Strategy. That's a photo of the strategy. That was a 1920 goal. The project spans several years, and essentially in the strategy are findings as well as recommendations on both what is lack- recommendations on both what is lacking in Wilsonville in regards to arts and culture and then recommendations to kind of build arts and culture in Wilsonville. Essentially, the ACHC came about from the strategy and the strategy really guides the work that the commission is doing. So their mission is to enhance the Wilsonville community by supporting, advocating, and advising on matters relating to advancing arts, culture, and heritage. We, the commission, strongly believe residents' lives are enriched and enhanced through a thriving arts and culture environment. So they began meeting in April of 2022, so I want to point out they are a newer city board. So this is the second addition that the council has seen of this one-year, five-year plan. They have nine voting members and six are original, so have been with the ACHC since its inception. And Mayor Fitzgerald is an ex-officio member and we really appreciate her support over those years. So some accomplishments from the past year, 23, 24. So they oversee the Community Cultural Events and Programs Grant, something they do annually. There's $25,000 annually from the general fund, specific for this grant, that is for nonprofit organizations. Last year's recipients included the Charbonneau Arts Association, the Wilsonville Coral Art Society, Wilsonville Rotary, and Wilsonville Stage. So the ACHC will review those applications and then make recommendations on how those funds are distributed. They also completed the Public Art Program Policy and Guidelines. This was a really large undertaking. Although the city has a large public art collection, there was no policy or guidelines kind of governing how that was happening or how that was working. So it really legitimizes the city's public art program and provides transparency for both the residents and artists that are interested in participating. So it really outlines every single process and kind of section that involves public art. So how artists are chosen, what the process is, process for purchasing art versus, you know, commissioning, how artists are hired, that is all within the policy and guidelines. So the ACHC reviewed multiple drafts of that provided by staff and then ultimately forwarded on to council, and council adopted that November of 2023. Their first kind of big public art project was the Memorial Park Skate Park mural. I was recently here presenting on that, so I'll kind of skim over this, but that was funded by the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Project. So the ACHC roles was they provided input to staff on the language in that RFQ, which is used to solicit artists. We partnered with the Wilsonville Skate Park Association, so skaters joined the ACHC to be that selection panel. And then they went through the process with scoring RFQ submissions and then discussing that, determining which artists they wanted to advance to the proposal round, and then looking at those artists' actual design proposals and plans for the actual skate park walls, and then making the decision to award the project to Abigail Penfold, which was artist and skater. So that's just one photo of the mural. It does wrap around the entire perimeter, so there's 10 sections of it, and her concept is local wildlife, like building a skateboard. So each section of the mural has a different part of a skateboard. These are some photos from the Skate Jam event, and then we did a ribbon cutting as well. Many of our public art projects do span multiple fiscal years, so most of the work did take place in last fiscal year, but the actual painting was in this current one. So there is some overlap with the projects I'm talking about. They also helped with a Pride Month mural, so the purpose of that was to provide visual representation for the LGBTQ+ communities during the month of June, which is Pride Month. That was a collaboration with the DEI Committee. So again, they provided input to staff on the language in the Call for Art application and then reviewed those applications and awarded the project to Ren Kyles. So that's a photo of the mural. It was just up for June. It's on the Parks and Rec Admin Building, and that's the artist talking about it. And then we did hold a small reception event for Pride Month. The City Hall Gallery is just down the hallway outside the council chambers. This is a collaboration with the Clackamas County Arts Alliance. The exhibits rotate about every three months, so four per year. It actually just changed the exhibit, so right now is local Wilsonville artist Elaine Swite. Her work is up now. And we try to hold receptions for each exhibit if the artist is interested. So they've also approved upcoming public art projects, so that's kind of the first step, and then the work actually starts. So they approved staff moving forward with the Hearts of Wilsonville Many Cultures One Heart Project. So up until this point, they've approved the Call for Art, and I'll talk about that project more in the upcoming projects. And then they've also approved staff moving forward with Boones Ferry Park as being kind of the first location for a larger-scale project. So upcoming projects that they are implementing. So this Hearts of Wilsonville Many Cultures One Heart Project, the theme aims to represent the distinctive artistic, cultural, and historical framework that makes Wilsonville a wonderful place. Artwork designs may also incorporate the diversity of the city to celebrate the many communities located here. So essentially, it's, the project is 10 fiberglass hearts that will be placed in front of city facilities and in city parks. That call closed early November, so we received 28 designs from 19 artists. And similar to the Skate Park mural, the project's funded by the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Project. So just to give a visual, this is the heart. They're about four and a, four and a half feet across and four and a half feet tall. So the ACHC will be actually looking at all of those designs at their next meeting, which is this week. So if you want to look at the designs that is in their current packet. So the Boones Ferry Public Art Project, that is attached to CIP 9183, which is the Public Art CIP. It'll be large-scale permanent works at Boones Ferry Park. So they will review the RFQ, which is still in draft form, and then they will again be the main selection panel for selecting the artists and the artwork and giving the artists the input of what the Wilsonville community would, you know, really want in that space. This is just some visuals from the RFQ, which is still in the draft form, but just to give a visual, the artists will have an option to focus on both zones, both locations, so creating multiple pieces, or they can also focus on one, just depending how they want to kind of budget and how they interpret the space. So that is Zone One. And then Zone Two is there, so it's just to kind of give a visual where we're looking at the placement of the pieces. Arts and Cultural Nights, this is really early on in the planning, so I don't have a ton of information, but the ACHC is really wanting to take more opportunities to just really bring the community together and celebrate arts and culture. They received opportunity grant funding, which is a grant overseen by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So they're wanting to host some evening events celebrating and educating the community on cultural dance traditions, local artists, and heritage, and work with the Historical Society. They talk a lot about the old history pub nights at McMenamin's, so it's kind of, kind of an ode to that, of just bringing the community together. So this isn't everything, but just kind of a snapshot of things that they will really work on annually. And again, a lot of this is pulled directly from the city's strategy. So they will continue to do the CCEP funds and make those recommendations, increase arts classes and arts events, investigate funding structures and options for public art and arts programs, determine locations of future public art. Doing the Pride Month mural was really well-received, so I think that will be annual public art assessment of current collection. So really just looking at what we currently have, seeing, you know, what needs, you know, lighting or new signage, things like that. Continue to have joint collaborative meetings with the DEI Committee, increase awareness of arts, culture, heritage programs through marketing, and develop culturally relevant programming centering diversity, ethnic inclusivity, and accessibility. So happy to take questions or feedback. And then again, just putting a reminder that the Resolution 3174 is on the consent agenda for the adoption of the plan.
I wanted to just say thank you for all this work, and I have attended as a non-voting member most of the meetings of this pretty new committee, and they've really dialed in and dug in and worked hard on this, and thank you for your leadership, Erica. When you look at the five-year plan, you know that they will come back to the city council every year, and you'll get a new one-year plan and a new five-year plan. And what this committee is doing is, when I look on the website, if you search for the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy document, which Erica showed a picture of, it's a multi-page document, and it lists in the first few pages dozens of people from Wilsonville who were involved in developing that document. So, and we have been hearing about this for many, many years. So this is the beginning, and they've made a great start. Do any of the councillors have any comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move to our last item on the pre-council work session, which is our Clean Water State Revolving Fund, DEQ, and the presentation is by our finance director and maybe our engineer as well. Keith Katko, thank you.
Is that, are we sharing? Am I sharing now? Share. I got you. Okay. Hello, my name's Keith Katko. I'm the city's finance director. And just a real quick discussion tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about sewer infrastructure financing to cap this work session off, and how the city can leverage the Clean Water State Revolving Fund as part of the financial equation for some upcoming large sewer capital projects. I'm just going to highlight some information, and I'll actually be coming back next month to bring to council a more broad staff report and a resolution for your consideration to take advantage of the funding and/or any additional information that you may have about the State Clean Water Revolving Fund. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund, basically, it's administered by DEQ. It acts as an environmental infrastructure bank by providing below-market rate revolving loans, like significantly reduced rates. So the current rate for a 20-year interest term is 2.14% if we were to pursue this line of financing through the state, where you're looking at, you know, 20-year mortgage rates are above 7% now. So the other big plus of using the State Revolving Fund is it's a revolving kind of debt. So we would only be withdrawing the money or taking the money from the state to the extent that we have contractual-type payments for sewer projects. And as part of the process, the sewer, the city actually applied to the DEQ and received some confirmation that two of our sewer capital improvement projects that the city will be undertaking very soon do qualify for up to $29 million in state financing, and that is the Beckman Creek Interceptor Project, which we would be eligible for $18 million from the State Revolving Fund. And a second project, which we call, it's an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plan, it's the wastewater treatment plant, Eration Basin Project, and the, under the DEQ Clean Water Fund, we are eligible for $11 million in state financing from that. So under the qualifying arrangement, the city would pledge its sewer system development collections as debt service. And so for the city, of course, this pledged use of SDC ensures the nexus of growth paying the way for the improvements to these infrastructure. So that's all I really have to notify you today. Like I mentioned, I'm coming back next month with a staff report and a resolution, kind of explaining this and packaging this up and providing it for you to confirm that we would like to use these or tap these funds for these sewer projects.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions? More to come at the next meeting then.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that concludes our work session because, as we described, we deferred, we eliminated item D because we already have the information. And given that we, sorry everyone that we ran a little bit late, how about we take a five-minute break and reconvene to open our regular council session at 7:05? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council, November 18th, 2024, at 7:06 PM. And we'll start by asking our city recorder to do the roll call.
Counselor Berry.
Here.
Counselor Linville.
Here.
Counselor President Ockervall.
Here.
Counselor Dunwell.
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by nation under Allah, indivisible, and infinite in essence.
May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your Honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
I will second that. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We'll start with mayor's business, and I wanted to start by just reflecting on the work of our council and our city staff on the Wilsonville Area Childcare Consortium. We had a discussion about this in our work session, and I wanted to thank Council President Ockervall for leading on that initiative, which was one of our council goals. Our council goals are items that the council decides they want to undertake in addition to all of the other things. It does not include every single thing that we do, it's an add-on, and you put a lot of work into that, and I really appreciate it, and thank you. Counselor Linville also has taken a lot of initiative and spent a lot of time on a sort of a similar committee, but it's different, and that is representing small cities in decisions and planning for how the opioid settlement will be handled, and you hear from her on that periodically. And councilors Dunwell and Berry will talk about many of their other things that they have been working on and are continuing to work on in the next year, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of those things, and I hope, I know they will continue in the next session. This is a time for me to report on meetings I've gone to that I want the council to know about, and then we will hear from each of them under their reports later. So on November 7th, I attended the, what they call the C4 meeting, which is Clackamas Cities Meeting Together Regarding Matters Within Clackamas County, essentially, and it includes cities, special districts, and other jurisdictions. And so in this last meeting, we had a very detailed panel discussion led by, about housing production strategies by a number of cities, and those are Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, Milwaukee, and Tooeleton. And they talked about pluses, minuses, learnings, and how this can work most productively for other cities as well. And I think there were a lot of good takeaways from that discussion. In Wilsonville, we are now undertaking our own housing production strategy work, and that is a committee, also has a committee of residents, and Counselor Dunwell is the liaison, and Counselor Berry has been the alternate liaison to that committee, and it's still ongoing, but doing a lot of good work to really conduct our housing production strategy with staff. The name of our housing production strategy is called Housing Our Future, and it's led by our Planning Division, and it's been a great opportunity for residents to get engaged on what the future of housing will look like in our community over the next 20 years. At the C4 meeting, we also heard an update on various work groups for the Joint Committee on Transportation, and they are really representing this area for 2025 Legislative Session. And one issue I wanted to highlight that our staff knows well, and our councilors, that we need to continue to push on, and that is funding for the Boone Bridge Replacement Project. I know we talk about it constantly, but it needs continuing attention, and that is because when House Bill 2017 passed, it included only one project from each county, and the Boone Bridge was not named as one of those projects. It was other projects around I-205. But in later years, House Bill 3055 passed, and that was when the Boone Bridge was named a megaproject. So as we look at how the state of Oregon is deciding how to fund things, we want to make sure that those megaprojects, we're just one of four megaprojects, retain the same level of priority as all of the projects that were named in the House Bill 2017. Thank you for everybody who continues to write letters and give us all the enthusiasm we need to push that forward, and our future council will be working on that. We had a lot of activity on Veterans Day last week, the City and Korean War Veterans Association, the Oregon Trail Chapter sponsored a Veterans Day Remembrance Ceremony on Veterans Day, and it was really a very nice opportunity to visit with, to hear all of the speakers, essentially, we heard some wonderful commentary, and I appreciated Counselor Berry and Counselor Ockervall joining me there, and also our future mayor, Sean O'Neill, was there, and a lot of other residents. So over the years, I've really had great opportunities to meet with our veterans at those events and get to know them, and I'm so glad that they have completed the interpretive center at the Town Center, that I, you know, everyone can continue to go there. So that's been a great opportunity. Coming up is Small Business Saturday, which happens every year, it's on November 30th, and we are going to do a proclamation for Small Business Saturday in Wilsonville, and this is part of a national effort to drive consumers to shop at local, independently-owned businesses on the Saturday after Thanksgiving on November 30th. And it falls between Black Monday and Cyber Monday. It's dedicated to supporting local small businesses that help create jobs, boost economy, and keep communities thriving. I wanted to check with our, is this the good time to read this, or did we have a later time for the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, sometimes it comes up later, okay. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and given all of the attention we have in Wilsonville to our small businesses, I think what residents can do is ask one of your neighbors or family members if they want to go shopping in Wilsonville, and that will be our way to support our local small businesses. So whereas the city of Wilsonville, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States, small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ almost half, 49.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at small businesses in the U.S. stays in the local economy, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in the local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 59% of U.S. consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped or ate at a small, independently-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday 2023, and whereas the city of Wilsonville, Oregon supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups such as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, I Julie Fitzgerald, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Wilsonville, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in Wilsonville, and urge all residents in our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small businesses throughout the year. Thank you. Our next city council meeting is going to be held on Monday, November 2nd, at 7:00 PM. What did I say? Oh, November. Monday, December 2nd, starting at 7:00 PM. So at this point in the agenda, we are doing some of the board appointments of members for openings on our boards and commissions, and these openings come up throughout the year. We will also be reappointing members who are eligible for renewal and want to renew. So we're really lucky to have so many people willing to spend time in these positions. I think there are 60-plus positions on these boards and committees, and we really appreciate their time and dedication. I will now ask Council President Ockervall to read the motion, as it is our custom, due to our city charter, for the mayor to make the recommendations and to ask for the council's ratification.
Yes, I move to ratify the appointment of Larissa Manuel Byer to the Budget Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Christopher Moore to the Budget Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And we have a number of these motions, so I think we'll stick with the same pattern to keep it moving. Thank you.
Get in a roll here. I move to ratify the appointment of Dana Crawford to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Janice Sanford to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Rob Candrian to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
Second.
I'm ahead of you.
Go ahead.
I'm going for it. I second.
Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Jordan Heron to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of John Clark Hildum to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Rachel Barrett to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Alice Galloway Neely to the Development Review Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2026.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Anthony Reyes to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Sarah Spoon to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Diane Emel to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
Second the motion. The motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Justin Brown to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Matt Brown to the Kidacata Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Joshua Doglish to the Kidacata Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Samuel Scarpone to the Kidacata Sister City Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Grace Richards to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2028.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the reappointment of Amanda Harmon to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2028.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move to ratify the appointment of Libby Crawford to the Tourism Promotion Committee for a term beginning January 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2025.
All in favor. I'll second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I move to ratify the appointment of Jared Furby to the Tourism Promotion Committee for a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I move to ratify the appointment of Noel Kradak to the Tourism Promotion Committee for a term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-five, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second the motion. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you for that. Excellent.
May I make a comment?
Please.
I just would really like to thank you for the work that you did, although that seems like a perfunctory kind of function that the council does. I think it's important that it be memorialized that for all of the new members or most of the new members that in fact you have done personal interviews with all of those people. And this is a thoughtful process that you have gone through in making those recommendations as well as a time-consuming effort. So I would like to thank you on behalf of the council for that work.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that comment.
Well, it's something I started and then I found it so interesting and enlightening, I didn't even consider not doing it. So I learned, I always learn a lot in all of my conversations, and I wanted to add that all of the councilors receive all of the applications as well. They can also, they also are asked to review all of them and can interview any of those applicants that they want. And the city has a really robust way of advertising these openings. It's funny that I had somebody ask me today if we, you know, how do we let people know about these? And it just shows you that it takes a lot of times to publicize, to let people see what you're doing. But they are publicized a lot of different ways, and you can look on the city website to see that each of the committees has their own charter, and some of them were established many years ago. And the charters tell us how many years each term is, and some of the terms are just two years, and some of the terms are four years, and how many renewing terms are allowed by the charter. And when you heard some of the terms were just one year, that was because somebody might have left their term before it was over, and so the person being appointed is serving that remaining one year or something. And that is built in so that we don't have everybody going off at the same time. And it's a big commitment of time for all of the people, and that is one of the ways for community involvement. The others are the Civics Academy, which is just starting its tenth year in January, and of course, coming to meetings and various other things. So thank you. That brings us, oh, sure.
I wanted to thank, I think we generally have more applications than spots that we can't fill. And so I wanted to be sure that we thank our citizens for their willingness to serve on our boards and commissions. That is an incredibly important function that, and we have willing citizens who spend their time providing that kind of, that level of a citizen input to both the council and to our administration, so.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. And I just want to add one more thing because it's important to share this information that each time I start an interview for any of the positions, I let the people know that we have way more applicants for that position. You know, we might have two openings on one committee, but we might have seven people who have applied. So the people who apply put in a lot of time reading about it and having the interview, and I recommend that they apply again if they don't get in because we keep those applications for a year, and some people have applied two or three times, and that's a good idea. Just keep sending that in or refreshing because we'll keep looking for those openings. So, and we also try to balance out representation from different neighborhoods and all the different aspects of our city. So this brings us finally to the communication segment of our, excuse me, our agenda, and we will hear from the Wilsonville Historical Society Community Enhancement Program. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening I am here to introduce the president of the Wilsonville Historical Society. They have completed a recent community enhancement grant program, and they are here to share that. As you'll recall, this is something that we've added to increase transparency and share with you the good work that our community is doing on projects that are funded through the community enhancement program. So I will not waste any time in introducing Megan Oldstead, who is the current president of the Wilsonville Historical Society.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Megan Oldenstat. I'm the president of the Wilsonville Historical Society, and this year we completed the oral history video preservation project that was part of the community enhancement program. As you may see in the quotations there or the parentheses, we were formerly the Wilsonville Boons Ferry Historical Society, and this year we legally and officially changed our name to the Wilsonville Historical Society. So this, this project has been many years in the making. It got extended. It was originally twenty-two to twenty-three time period, but it was extended to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Honestly, that was before I came on, so I don't know why the extension, but I think we had a little bit of backlog post-COVID on some of these projects. I'm not going to go through all these details, but just to summarize kind of the highlights of the project. The main intention was to convert over eighty recorded interviews that we have in our collection that were on non-ar archival VHS and hi-eight video cassette tapes. They've been sitting up in our storeroom and not very accessible. So the main bulk of this project was converting those to the digital format so we can start using them and accessing them within our research. From that digitizing, then we were to create video content and different projects available to the community to share the treasure trove that is in these interviews, and then continue to develop plans within our educational system with the schools and different outlets like Willamette Falls Media Center, which is a local cable network, City of Wilsonville Cable Network, and put stories in the Boons Ferry Messenger and the Spokesman. So the first phase was digitizing, and Willamette Falls Media Center took that part of the project on. This is in fact where they were stored in the attic of the library. Those upper boxes were where they were for probably close to twenty years. I will tell you that storeroom is much more organized now, but they did over eighty interviews. Half of those were on hi-eight cassettes. We had a few cassette, audio cassettes as well. And that created a digital archive that is in multiple locations just for security. We have a hard drive stored at the library. Several of us officers on the Historical Society have copies at our home. We've also uploaded them to Google Drive and a private YouTube channel while we continue to develop the media. This is just a snapshot of the videos that we got back from the Willamette Falls Media. They have the interviewee's name in them, and then they're numbered, like forty-seven of eighty-two, or which number of that recording they were. And a second part of this project was to merge a previous community enhancement project with this oral history project. So this is the merging of those. Previously, twenty-six, actually thirty-three interviews have been transcribed, and that file is over nine hundred pages. So that's a lot to read from these interviews. But we really wanted to make them more interesting and engaging, so we have continued to do research on the individuals that the interviews, the transcribed interviews are from to create biographies on them and share some of the information that they have shared in their interviews. These are just a few snapshots of some of our participants, and I will tell you, it's very hard to get a flattering photo of someone who's giving an oral history interview. So this is the best I could come up with, but they're definitely not thinking about their presentation. They're so immersed in the stories that they're sharing, so unfortunately, well, very few of these people are still with us. There are a couple, and so they may not hold that against me. This is just a quick example of the treasure trove, like I said, of these oral histories, and I have listened to most of them at this point. It is an amazing capturing of our history in the community for people who lived through these times that we may not have record of anywhere else. So this was from an interview with Liz Geiton, Fox Morey. She's got several names. A photo that she had of her grandmother, that arrow, if you can see that, is on there. And I'm going to let you hear in her own words a little bit about this story. She also is gonna, is, in the interview talks about this photo, which is a hops drying barn here in Wilsonville around eighteen-nineties. But just for time's sake, I'm going to only share a portion of this interview. And I hope the audio is loud enough. Oh, I was worried about that. I guess you don't get to hear it. Okay. Oh, it might be the Zoom. Well, I'll just tell you about it then. So this was just an example. This is the videos, the interviews. They're not cinematography that is movie-worthy, but they're a really great opportunity for these individuals to show us in their own words the meanings of these stories or these photos and stories that we wouldn't have captured. They wouldn't be living part of our living history. If it doesn't work, it's okay. I can just summarize. Oh, okay. I'm not sure if the volume's going to be loud enough. I think just to, because the media, I'll put these on our website so that you can, if anyone is interested and wants to hear the stories. So this photo she was talking about, that this woman in white is her grandmother. These are local workers and Wilsonville residents that worked the hop fields every year while hop production was in the highlight. You can see the dog and the child in the front are shaking. You know, they had a photographer come from Portland and had them pose for this photo. That was a pretty big deal around eighteen-ninety. They had to hold really still. So we have a lot of blurry faced photos. One of the most interesting things that she shared is that women especially usually only got one new dress a year, and they would purchase it or have it made at the, in the fall, right before hop harvest, because the sizing on the material, which is like a starch, would protect the dress from the hops, which are sticky and they stain and they stink. And so then they would get the dress kind of covered in hops during the season while they're harvesting, and then they would wash the dress, the sizing would wash out and wash the stains out, and then they'd have their dress until the next year. So that's something that's not in history books very commonly. That's really unique to Wilsonville. Again, this was a hops drying barn. I think it was over where Damish used to be, which maybe isn't a living reference any longer, past Wood Middle School, Graham Oaks area. And you can see in the back those rectangles are hop bales, so they bail, compress the hops, bail them up, and ship them to Portland for the beer production. And then we have another interview within our photo roundup interview collection, and this was the Beckman family. In front of them is the beginnings of Beckman Road. That home is still standing over on Canyon Creek area. It's been remodeled, so you wouldn't recognize it. And this is the second generation of the Beckmans that were in the area. And she, Ellen Eldidge, talked about her family and how she came about this photo. So this is a short video, but since the audio's not coming through, I'm.
Happened to come by this picture, or who are the people?
Louder. So we have hours of these treasures. The interviews, one of the other objectives for the grant was to make these interview transcripts more widely available. So we had several copies bound or in binders. There's one available with the reference librarians at the Wilsonville Library, and then we have two copies available within the Historical Society. We also have converted them to PDF and made them available on our Google Drive archive that's available by request. And then we combed through these interviews to create historical vignettes from the stories that were being told. And one of the things we got when these were transcribed was an index of the topics and the people that were talked about. Now, when you have nine hundred pages of transcribed oral histories, there's a lot of different content, a lot of overlap on people, especially when the community was just a couple hundred people at the time of most of their stories. So this index was great for reference, but not real accessible for research. And so we converted that into a searchable dynamic spreadsheet so that it cross-references the interviewee that it's talking about and just makes that information more available. Then we took those vignettes and developed a story from them. And specifically with the interviews, you'll see the people's names listed. We pulled out extracts from their stories of growing up in Wilsonville, and we created a fictitional character named Oliver based on actual stories of life in Wilsonville. This is a timeline, made up timeline, but based on the evidence, or not really the evidence, but the stories of their lives in the area. And this is being, has been created into a book that is currently being designed, we're on final design stages right now, so you guys are the first ones to see this. Most of our members haven't seen this yet. The cover's been tweaked a little bit. It's about a sixty-page storybook oriented for fourth grade level because that's the year you study Oregon and local history. And here's a few of inside pages. So this is taking photos from our photo archive that the Historical Society has from a previous community enhancement project, and then this story that we built around these stories from this, these oral history interviews. And again, it is a fictitional story, but it's based on true memories and experiences growing up in Wilsonville. The other side of this is this project has really ignited some continual projects that we're really excited about to share this information with the community. So our first big project of next year is a website where we will continue to share excerpts of these interviews and archive them in a way that they're more accessible to the community. We plan to extract clips and stories of the interviews. So this last summer, we did one around the Fourth of July and what people's memories of growing up in Wilsonville around the Fourth of July were. I think it's on our very underutilized Instagram page. But we went through and used the index to find all the people that mentioned Fourth of July in their stories and then did clip those interviews together. We're, we continue to enjoy working with our partnerships with the Wilsonville Library and Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission. Willamette Falls Media is still wanting to put videos on their channel, but they have not actually launched them into the world yet. And we are always looking for ways to connect with the local schools and the teachers to provide information about our history to that age level. Let's see if I have anything else. The other things that we continue to do are these photo roundup events. That is where these, this information came from initially, and we want to start covering other time periods that we don't have in our archive, the eighties, the nineties, current day in Wilsonville, so that we can get those photos in here now, and hopefully in a hundred years, they're looking back like, wow, look what Wilsonville was in two thousand twenty-four. So that is the really quick and brief review through that project. We're happy to have it buttoned up, but we're also really excited at what it started for our next year of service to the community. We really appreciate this opportunity to work with all of you. And then I do want to just mention, you have the information already on your desk. Anyone that's here is welcome to it as well, but we have a few new things that we're doing this next year that we're really excited about, and we will continue to weave those oral history interviews and data from that project into our projects, which are a speaker series, community research days, and other activities. So that, I'm not going to go through the details unless you have questions. It's on your sheet. And then we're having a book release party in February for that book. It will be available in December. It should be available before the holidays, should be printed and in our hands by early to mid-November, December. But we will celebrate the book and the designer. But we will celebrate the book and the designer and all the people that worked on it. So everyone's welcome. It'll be at the library February 14th, early in the day, so you can still carry on with your Valentine's festivities. We'll have a happy hour. It's also the library's birthday, so we plan to celebrate with them as well. So thank, oh, and I will say one more thing. As part of our monthly speaker series, our January 27th, excuse me, January 21st, 2025 speak, talk is about the, this grant project and how it led into this book project and the making of the book. So we'll be doing that in January in preparation for our February book release.
Well, thank you very much. Wonderful work. And just to recap, this project that you described was funded by a grant that came out of the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Project, which is funding that Wilsonville receives through Metro because we have a refuse transfer station here. That's a nice word for recycling and refuse transfer station. And, and it's, it's the same for every city that has a transfer station. And they have been having a practice of awarding, I believe, $1 for every ton of wet waste to the communities. And then we, one of our committees that I didn't talk about tonight, because there were no openings, no appointments or renewals, is that, that committee that makes those grant decisions. And so this is your chance, and we really appreciate you coming. And I know we've had other presentations to report back on the result of those funds. Any other comments, councilors?
Okay, I do, actually, a couple of quick things. I'm really pleased that you're getting ready to release some of this out on YouTube. Yeah, one of the things that I continue to keep top of mind is that with the growth of Wilsonville, so many of our citizens have no tie to the history of this city. And so giving them a foundation of, we're just not Fred Meyer and, and I-5, and bringing back all of that together because we are who we, where we came from. And so getting that out on social media, finding other ways to promote it on some of the other social media challenges, I think will allow people to go, this is where I belong. Because I sense, I think a sense of belonging is so important. The other thing that I would recommend, and I don't know if it's possible, is your regular one, membership meetings are held during the day on a weekday, which really excludes a large number of our citizens, just because they're either at work or at school. If there would be a way that you could stagger those or do something so that other individuals could participate, because I know I myself have in the past been a member of the Historical Society, but it is very difficult to attend if you're working. So just a, just a thought to increase some of the membership and participation.
Yeah, and that is why, thank you. That's why we added these additional opportunities. The research days are on Sundays, which I know can be tricky for people, but Sunday afternoons. And then the evening speaker series. And our, our weekly meetings, or, excuse me, our monthly meetings have turned more into a group research and time to work on projects. We did this past year, tried to do some evening meetings, and we had no attendance. So it's just going to take some while to build up our membership, build up the interest, and then we're glad to offer those other opportunities to connect.
All right, thank you very much. Now we are ready for the citizen input and community announcement section. Do we have anyone wanting to speak?
I don't think we've received any.
Zoom or phone or other venues, so we don't need to read this. Okay, that brings us to councillor comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements, starting with councillor, council president Ockerball.
Thank you. Let's see, since our last meeting, as the, as the mayor mentioned, the Veterans Day ceremony, I'm glad that I was able to attend that. I think it was one of our, our wetter and colder events that we have had. But it's always, it's always such a privilege to be able to gather with, you know, the, the group of veterans, specifically that group of veterans which have a tie to the Korean War. And sadly, the group is getting smaller over the years. And so I think that just even underscores and highlights what, how important it is and the, the honor to be able to have that time to interact and to hear their memories and have a deeper understanding of the meaning of their sacrifice and what it means going forward. So thank you, thank you to all of them. And thank you to city staff that helps every year put that together and getting speakers out in the rain and covered with plastic and all the things. Thank you. It's special, and I feel very proud that we have that war memorial in our city. I also attended the Regional Solutions Advisory Committee meeting this last week. We are still in the process of establishing what goals the Clackamas County, Washington County, and Multnomah County will be looking at specifically for that group. And have confirmed that, that I will continue my involvement with them through this next June. And then, let's see, I'm going to make an announcement about leaf day coming up on the 23rd. So that's this weekend. And goodness, there's a lot of leaves coming down in the city, so everyone should listen up. This is in partnership with Republic Services, thank you very much. The city hosts together, they host the annual leaf drop-off day, and it is at the City Hall parking lot from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Specifics that you need to know is that we are dropping off leaves only, folks. This is not a time for other yard debris, so no branches, leaves only, okay? City Public Works employees are on hand to assist with the disposing of the leaves into the large dumpsters that are going to be provided by Republic Services. Again, thank you, Republic Services. There is no fee that is charged for dropping off those leaves, but we are suggesting that you bring a cash or check donation for Wilsonville Community Sharing. And Wilsonville Community Sharing is the operator of our community food bank. They also do so many other supports, including some social services, referrals, huge help for our community in many different ways. So that's a, it's a great thing to support. And you get rid of your leaves. Here's another tip. Use large paper bags that you could get from a local hardware store. And this is a great thing to put the leaves in instead of the plastic bags because the large paper bags are recyclable. And this event, ah, like in its entirety, is a component of Republic Services franchise agreement for solid waste collection. And the last thing, if you don't take your leaves to the leaf drop-off date. Now, it says that we really appreciate everyone's efforts to try to keep these leaves out of the street. The best place for the leaves is at the drop-off, not in the street. And you, you do see that, people leaf blow the leaves into the street. It causes traction issues. It's, our street cleaners can't really effectively pick those up as well as it can't pick up grass clippings. All of this kind of organic material that we throw into the, the street screws up our stormwater. It's just no good. So we're going to put it in the paper bags, and we're going to take it to City Hall on Saturday between 9:00 and 2:00. And you're going to bring a donation for Wilsonville Community Sharing. So that's it. Now, now everyone's on board, I think.
Sounds great.
Off we go. Okay.
It also saves, saves the taxpayers money on paying for those things in our storm drains. I know our public works director. So, okay, thank you. Now councillor Linville.
Thank you. Since our last council meeting on the 21st of October, is that when our last council meeting was? Yes. I, I attended at the end of October, the Charbonneau History Fireside Presentation, which was actually, it was larger than Charbonneau. It was done by our, one of our resident historians, Greg Leo, and really talked about the function of the ferry at Boones Ferry and how that impacted the development of, of our city and Charbonneau specifically. On the 6th of November, I attended the opioid settlement prevention, treatment, and recovery board meeting. And it was, it was an interesting meeting in that the governor's office submitted a request to the board for funding for Save Lives Oregon, which was one of the very first allocations that was done by the board at the beginning of its inception. And their request was for $30.6 million, 81, 84% of which would go to supplying naloxone for a variety of communities. And they estimate that over 8,000 overdose reversals have occurred as a result of the availability of the, of naloxone. The dilemma that the board is facing is that for the next biennium, we are expecting revenues of $32.8 million, of which a majority has already been allocated. And so we only have for the next biennium about $21.3 million, and their request is for $30.6. So if we fund them, our dilemma is if we fund them, what doesn't get funded? So the board is struggling with that. We think that there's just a ton of money that's coming in from the settlements for, through the pharmacies that, for opioid, for the opioid cases, but it isn't as much as we need, and it will never be enough. And then on the 21st of November, I will attend the Small Cities Consortium, Small Cities Consortium, which the mayor mentioned that I serve on. And that will probably be our last meeting for the, for the calendar year. Our opioid settlement prevention and treatment and recovery board meeting for the 4th of December has been canceled, and that is my report.
Thank you. Councillor Barry.
Thank you. So, well, I want to acknowledge our elections. And I see two people here that will be part of the new council, so Sean O'Neil and Anne Chevlin. I don't think Andy Cunningham's here tonight, but congratulations and welcome. Oh, Adam, sorry, excuse me. So, and then I attended several committees since our last city council meeting, Housing Our Future with Katie. We talked about that a little bit, where it's a mandate that every city in the state talks about their housing strategy and, oh, how we're going to produce enough housing in the future. On November 7th, I sat in on the Clackamas County C4 Metro meeting with the mayor. We also talked about the housing. Then also on November 7th, I attended the Wilsonville School District First Responder School District meeting. And I, I thought that was really, really informative. I sat at the table with the high school principal for Wilsonville High School and two of the school board representatives and the district communication representative. And I just learned a lot, and I felt, going away, I felt really good. I hope there is never an emergency event where the first responders have to apply their skills. But I feel like the school district has thought this out and that our kids that are attending the schools are in good hands. That was so reassuring. And Katie was also at that meeting. On November 11th, I attended the Veterans Day wreath ceremony, and that just made me really proud to be a citizen of the United States and to be able to honor our veterans. We had a really good turnout, I thought, with the wind and the rain. Let's see, coming up on November 20th, I'll attend this Clackamas County C4 Metro Subcommittee. And one of the topics that we'll be focusing in on is the regional housing coordination study. It's a mandate that Metro needs to put together a plan because of the urban growth boundary that is potentially going to be expanded near Sherwood. And so Metro needs to put together a strategy that's going to address funding, staff capacity, technical support for a few things. And then I just wanted to point out, because we hear a lot of feedback about communications between the council and the city and citizens. And I just want to highlight again, the Wilsonville Boones Ferry Messenger is just so full of so much good information. But on page three, there's a highlighted article that I want to point out about preparing food without power in case the lights go out and electricity goes out during an emergency. There's an article about if you have a sidewalk in front of your property that needs repairs, the city has a reimbursement program to help pay for that. So be sure to read it, it's great. That's my report. Thank you.
Hello. Just before I get going on what I was doing since our last meeting, I do want to recognize some dates in the month of November. Dear to my heart is November's Native American Heritage Month, and there is a proclamation in the packet, and it's also on the city's website. There is also in November, Dia de los Muertos was November 1. Diwali also on November 1, which is a Hindu festival. And then November 20th is Transgender Day of Remembrance. So we always have to remember that different cultures in our community and in our city are always, they have to, it's important we recognize them at a, at a DEI level. And I appreciate that the DEI committee actually gave us this information and identified the good work of their group in making sure that we don't forget as a city that we are part of a much bigger global community with people with, coming from a lot of different places and a lot of different values. As far as myself, gosh, it's been kind of busy. October 28th, the Willamette Intake Facility Commission. All of us as commissioners met, and there's always updates on construction as we all feel within the area. And then November 6th was, as councillor Barry also mentioned, the Housing Our Future Task Force. Continued feedback on the housing production strategy and then the prioritization of possible actions of the group. Also attended the first responders meeting. I saw that little short lady in that photo she showed, that was me. And then today, the Washington County Coordinating Committee met. And it was, I, I'm the alternate, and it was really an interesting meeting, mayor. I know I alternated since you could not attend. But what we did is we actually were, there were presentations and approvals for MSTEP matching funds. And MSTEPS stands for the Major Streets Transportation Improvements Program. And it was Beaverton, Tigard, I believe Washington County, King City. Multiple cities within Washington County made presentations for some significant matching funds. And why this matters to us is that most of these, a good percentage of these, were to complete trails. And I kept thinking back to what we're doing with Beckman and what we're doing with that, you know, because it's top of mind for a lot of us and all of the trailing that's going on, and there's a lot of work. And if any of you, in addition to council, read the council packet, there is, there's a lot going on, and it's going to take a lot of time, and it's going to take a lot of money. But then when you start thinking about the bigger picture and how all of this knits together, and how this creates something down the road. And when you took, when I took a look at what Beaverton was doing and what King City and some of these other locations were doing and pulling that all together, it is going to create this network, amazing network of trails throughout the entire metro area, which starts to knit us all together in a really cool way. So, really excited. And I did, I was a voting member today, and I did vote for it, for approval. But remember, these are matching funds. They're always dependent on federal funding coming through too. So there's always that dependency. We don't know. Also, I congratulate all of those individuals who were, received notification through all of our votes that they are going to be serving as mayor and council. And just a reminder to all of us that serve and will be serving that we work for all of our citizens. And it is important that we remember that we recognize all of their opinions and where they come from. I think everyone will recognize the fact that I do not serve with an agenda. And I am hopeful that that is something we will continue to do. And I'm actually confident that we will all continue to do that, and we will continue to bring the city together going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dunwell. Before I go to the consent agenda, I just wanted to check in with our city manager. The city, we have an official meeting, which I believe is our next meeting, to recognize the results of the election, and that is after the votes are...
Certified.
Certified.
Correct.
That is December 2nd? If we get the material.
It's Clackamas County elections, so maybe.
Okay. So let's plan on doing our own recognition with whatever material we have at that time?
Yes. I'm sorry, I wish I could give you a firm answer.
I just wanted to mention that because we do wait until that comes in, the certification, and have a motion.
I do believe that the election will be certified by December 2nd.
Okay. All right, thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. If the city attorney will please read the titles.
Resolution number 3030, a city of Wilsonville resolution approving the public bid process, accepting the lowest responsible bidder, and awarding a construction contract with Jesse Rodriguez Construction LLC in the amount of $877,500 for the construction of the Priority 1B Water Distribution Improvement Project, capital improvement project number 1148. Resolution number 3168, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to the professional services agreement with Conso or North America, Inc. to provide engineering consulting services for the Beckman Creek Interceptor and Trail Project, capital improvement project number 2107. Resolution number 3174, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission, ACHCF Fiscal Year 2024-25 Five-Year Action Plan and Annual One-Year Implementation Plan. Resolution number 3179, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the South Metro Area Regional Transit Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. Resolution number 3180, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting a funding plan forecast for the Stafford Road Improvements Phase 1, CIP numbers 1158, 2111, and 4219, and minutes of the September 5, 2024 city council meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Do I have a motion for its approval?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to our new business. And regarding the first item, which is a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting findings and recommendations of the solid waste collection report.
Mayor, that's, that's been taken off the amended agenda.
Right, I just want to describe it.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, but we didn't describe it at the beginning. So I just, it, it, okay, it's not on the published one. Okay, so we were going to discuss that today. It was on a previous published agenda. But we are going to get more information and talk about it at our next meeting. And that brings us to resolution 3121.
I think we're on 3183.
3183.
Oh, I missed one. Oh, right at the bottom of the page, 3183. Would you read the title, please?
Resolution number 3183, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Wilsonville to fund city-led initiatives addressing homelessness.
Thank you. And we will have a staff report and partner report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Amanda Guile Hinman, city attorney. And tonight I have with me Lynn Wetchell from Heart of the City, Lee Crosby from Wilsonville Community Sharing, and behind me somewhere, I saw her, Sandy Williams, also from Heart of the City. And tonight we're here to talk about resolution number 3183. And before I, I get into this a little bit more, one of the things that I really love about working at the city of Wilsonville is that although I serve as the city attorney, I'm given opportunities to work on projects that maybe fall, what would seem like a little bit outside of the scope of the city attorney. And working on how to address homelessness, particularly with our local partners, has been a really rewarding experience. And I'm very excited and proud to talk about the proposal that we're bringing to you all tonight for consideration. So as an agenda for tonight's presentation, I'm first going to provide some background leading, that led to this intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County. And going, and I'm also going to ask our nonprofit service providers to give a little bit background of what they're seeing as a knee, as the need currently in the city of Wilsonville. Then we'll get into a discussion of the initiatives that are proposed to be covered by this intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County. I'm then going to go over a few of the specifics of that agreement and then talk about some of the implementation steps that will be coming. So first, by way of background, in 2020, the voters in the metro area passed a voter, an ballot measure to create the supportive housing services funding. It's a tax that individuals and companies within the metro area pay to, to support housing initiatives. That funding gets distributed to the three counties, Multnomah, Clackamas, and Washington County. So in December of 2023, Clackamas County put out a call to the cities within Clackamas County for proposals to utilize some funding that the county was going to set aside for city-led initiatives. And the impetus for that was the county recognized that cities have unique needs when it comes to homelessness and housing issues. And so the cities can respond more effectively to some of those unique concerns and issues. And so Clackamas County put out this call for proposals where we could propose ways to spend some of that, the supportive housing services funding for local initiatives. So with the help of Heart of the City and Wilsonville Community Sharing, the city submitted a proposal for six different initiatives in 2024. Of those six initiatives, five were, received a grant award, which was announced in late spring, early summer. And then Clackamas County put it into its fiscal year budget for this fiscal year, which led to the intergovernmental agreement that we now have before you today. So before I get into the details of those proposals, I'd like Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City to talk a little bit about what we've seen as far as the needs of the community, particularly over the last few years, and how that need has increased. So, Lee, Lynn?
Sure, go. I'll go first.
Okay.
So we've seen, at Wilsonville Community Sharing, we've seen a 40% increase this year over last year. And just on the families that we are feeding, that's a little bit different than the applications that we take for housing and rental assistance and electricities. We've got 88 homeless people that we've been working with through this year, which was up about 10 from last year. We know they, they come and they go, so it's not, it's just not the same. But we do have a, a need for, to help them get care and, and help and food and keep them warm. We are going through money like crazy, as I know you are. The, the need is high, the ask is high. And so this is a great opportunity for us to take some of our funds and get it right to the people that we need to address immediately. It's going to be a great opportunity for us.
Absolutely. So, like Lee said, Heart of the City, we're up 56% since last year. I think the month of, hmm, let's see, September, we put out $16,000 for just housing alone. And I think, you know, Lee and I have talked about this a lot. You know, we're kind of on the front lines of seeing what's coming and knowing that this is going to be really big for both of our agencies to be able to be supported in this way. Luckily, we've been lucky to hire Sandy full-time, and we have an intern that we're using now, so that has helped us navigate. And we're doing a lot more case management than we've ever done before because mental health is just, is just really, really an issue right now because we are having a hard time finding places for people to go to get the help that they need. So we are acting as mental health professionals, trying to help people through all the paperwork and all the things that they may need to be able to just get one night at a hotel. I mean, like, there's just so much to it. And, and we're happy to do that. We, we are able to really, really learn about some wonderful people in our community that just need a little bit of help to be able to be a functioning person or to give more than they take. They just need, you know, somebody to sit down with them and go over their resume and different things like that. I can only see us going up, just this month, I think. Last year we did 32, and what are we at the, what are we, tonight, 18? 18? I think I saw we had 57 people already that we've served. And we don't do food, but we help in other ways. And so I just, like I said, I feel like this is just the initial wave that's going to be coming in. And, I mean, all we can do is all we can do. But this is going to just really solve a lot of issues and barriers. So we're very grateful to be a part of it.
So the initiatives that we've, that Clackamas County has awarded for us, like I said, there was five, five of the six. And I'll go over the sixth because I don't want to lose sight of that as well. So the first one is for motel vouchers. One of the things that both Heart of the City and Wilsonville Community Sharing identified was that it's very challenging unless a person falls into a specific category of identified, like, a specific category of a particular program that allows them to get into kind of emergency, an emergency placement. There's, they sort of fall through the cracks of where to go. And so we identified that getting motel vouchers for people as we're working, as our providers are working with them on finding housing opportunities was a real need. So we've been allotted over, a little over $100,000 for the next two, for this fiscal year and next fiscal year, to provide motel vouchers for individuals and families. And we estimate that that will allow, that will allow about three weeks for, for families to stay within, in a motel while they, while we work on placement. As part of the reporting for that, our providers have to submit those individuals or those families' information into a county program that helps identify them for housing. So it helps sort of start that, well, not just start, but work through that process of getting them into housing, the housing they need. The second item was auto repair. And this was, is budgeted for $72,000 per fiscal year for two fiscal years. One of the things that we've all identified is that, you know, when an individual's car breaks down, especially, you know, when they're either on, at risk, at serious risk of homelessness or are currently homeless, that's, that's them not getting to their job. That's not, that's them not being able to get to our service providers or get to the county. It's a huge barrier. And so we've identified that being able to do some auto repair to get people's cars moving or keep them moving is, is really vitally important. And they already have connections with an auto repair shop that, that is top-notch and understands the need and, you know, isn't going to push for more than what's needed to, to get the job done. The next, the next award was for, is for gas and clothing gift cards. So we are going, we get $25, $25 gas cards and $25 goodwill clothing cards. We get 20 of each per month for the 24 months that are covered. So that equals $12,000 for each of, for each year of the two fiscal years. So how that will be split up is Heart of the City will get 10 of each for each month, and Wilsonville Community Sharing will get 10 of each for each month to be able to be handed out to individuals. The other thing I will also note is they are very good at collaborating with each other to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. So that, so that's really great as well. It's nice that that's already built in, built in here. The next one is for financial literacy program. Heart of the City already has some experience in offering some financial literacy programming. And so this is to really kind of beef that up so that individuals who are utilizing services, either through these programs or through the programs that they offer, are, that they're able to look through the budget, their budgets, how can we, you know, how can we set you up for success? Or see where, you know, the pinch points are and see where we can find you some help in that regard. So that financial literacy program will be funded, again, for two years, $65,000 per year. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Also, with the financial literacy program, oftentimes we have repeat people that come through. They mark it on their calendars, and they'll come once the year is up that we can help them again. And so this is another way for us to say, there might be a problem here. And in order for us to help you again, we need you to take these classes. So that way we have another professional looking and making sure that we're not missing something and that maybe we can support them in another way. Or say, maybe we can make these changes, and we can do this. And so that, that's one of the, one of the bigger ones for both of us, is making sure that people have the education to handle their money because that's really important.
Yeah. And then the final proposal is for charging stations. This will be led by the city. It's a capital investment, so it's just a one-year allocation. This is for, what, when we did our survey of individuals experiencing homelessness with the help of Wilsonville Community Sharing when we were going through our camping code update, the number one thing that people identified that they needed help with was being able to charge devices to stay connected, to work, and to their families. And so a lot of times what we were seeing is that people were either illegally utilizing places to get, to get power or, I mean, it, we just didn't have a good setup. So what we are anticipating is getting two charging stations. One at the, we're planning kind of outside the library, and one in Town Center Park that can be utilized by anybody to charge their devices while they're there. And the plan is, we're looking at a charging station that has timers set to it. So it'll be timed to when those facilities are open, that the charging can occur. And, and it, it was actually a little bit serendipitous that the library was, outside of any of this, was also looking at kind of a rest and recharge location for its patrons. So this really was a, a really cool opportunity for us to look at, at getting some charging stations. So really excited about that. The sixth proposal was about some mental health counseling. And what Clackamas County has committed to us is because they do have some programming for mental health counseling, is they've committed to us about working through those existing avenues, so essentially to not duplicate efforts, that they will be working with us through their mental health counseling programs to provide that here. And there, there's some other work that we're doing outside of this city-led initiative to further that endeavor. So all told, Clackamas County is offering, has, is offering a grant to the city of over $500,000 over the next two fiscal years to work on housing and homeless, these housing and homelessness initiatives. So I can't speak for Wilsonville Community Sharing or Heart of the City, but this feels like a huge weight is being lifted to a certain extent to see that we're getting some of this funding. And I'm really excited to see how this, how these proposals move forward over the next two fiscal years. And then, so the agreement, like I said, is for two, is over two fiscal years. It is a reimbursement program. So what we will be working on is how that reimbursement flows from the county. flows from the county through the city and with Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City. What that means is we will be entering into a subcontract with Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City for them to implement these, these initiatives outside of the charging stations, because that will be handled by us. There are some reporting requirements, like I mentioned, like going in through the, the county's program for housing. And so those reporting requirements will need to be fulfilled by us mainly through Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City providing us that information. So those are some of the technicalities that we have to do to get this agreement all kind of squared away. And then, so those also are kind of the implementation items, is really we just have to get the, once this agreement is signed, is getting the subcontracts with Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City finalized. We're also already, we've been meeting to talk about how implementation looks, and they're doing some site visits with the motels and those kind of things to make sure that we've got it all sort of lined up and, and know, you know, we're getting Brenda, Brenda Evans involved, so she understands what, what is available and, and all of that. So, a lot of coordinations going on sort of behind the scenes outside of this agreement to make sure that, that we're using this funding to the best extent possible for our community. So, all of us are happy to answer any questions that you have about the agreement or about the particulars of the proposals. But just really excited to be at this point, finally.
Well, thank you. I was just going to recap, looking at your notes in the staff report, it, it talks about one of the dates when we got started on this, but I know it started even earlier than this. But we have talked about this at city council meetings earlier, and it's on January 31st, 2024, is when we submitted a proposal. And that was brought to the city council before it was submitted to Clackamas County. So this is just an example of ways that we describe this, many different ways in city council meetings so that people know about these programs and these opportunities. And also, in terms of, I was thinking about the involvement of members of our community in this work that we just heard about it, that we just heard about. And in addition to the individuals that we see here tonight, we also have the boards of directors of Heart of the City and of Clackamas, or Wilsonville Community Sharing. And so those boards, I know, have been involved in this, and I want to thank them for their work and your work to know the work and, and help both, you know, all groups involved understand what the need is and really appreciate what you've done. And then, finally, when I read about this two-year grant program, I, you know, what comes to mind is what happens when the two years is over? And if you could look up, I tell people this all the time because it's very interesting, just Google metro supportive housing services program or Clackamas County supportive housing services program, and you can read about this. And it was initially, the public voted on it, voters voted this in, and it is a program that will last for 10 years. Took a little while for them to work out all the agreements, and so it's not going to end right away. But of course, we do hope that our partners will continue to support this in the future years. So, Councilor Dunwell?
Thank you. I do have a question, just to start off, city attorney. Is it traditional that the cities work in, in partnership when, when, in administering these funds and making sure that all of the paperwork is done in the background? Is that, is that typical, or are we breaking new ground on that where it's more of a partnership between the city and the?
And the county, or?
The city and, and the two agencies.
This is pretty, this is pretty new for, for us. I mean, we've, the city itself has supported efforts of, of our nonprofit service providers, but us being sort of the vehicle for this county money is, this is new, very new.
I would, I would really appreciate us documenting this because I think it, there's an opportunity to create a model. I, I am, I go back two years ago when we were doing the, the, everything with the camping ordinances and all of the, the heavy lifting that you all did as city attorney and your staff. And then watching the partnership grow between Heart of the City and Wilsonville Community Sharing from that very first meeting, and I know I was only in one, but I remember watching the two of you just start to begin to work together. And so, when I was reading to prepare for tonight's council meeting, and I saw this come up, and I read through it, it was hard not to tear up because this is really special, and I applaud all three of you. I commend our city attorney and both of you, Lynn, and Lynn, and, and Lee, I know you both, and you are amazing assets to our community, and what you do is rare. So, I truly appreciate it, and I'm excited that we have the opportunity to have this come in front of us tonight. And yay, Clackamas County! It was, I'm sure it was well-written, the proposal was well-written, and it was set up to, to get us where we needed to go, so thank you.
And I would just like to note too, that I think, I have to really commend the city council on the work that was done on camping because there was a direct call to the city of Wilsonville to put forward a proposal because Clackamas County really appreciated the work that the city council did with regard to camping and the approach that the council took. So, I think, like, the value statements that you all adopted, those kind of efforts really showed Clackamas County that this money would be well-spent out in Wilsonville.
Thank you, council. And I just wanted to add something for process. Counselor, we want to have everybody comment here. Councilor Linville is going to make a motion pretty soon, we'll ask for it to be seconded, and we'll also have discussion at that time. But any more questions or comments on, or clarifying? Okay, I kind of got that started that direction myself, so. Counselor Linville, would you like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes, Your Honor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 3183.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Linville and seconded by Council President Ackerball. Now, is there any discussion?
Yes.
May I? Go ahead.
I, I want to kind of give just a little bit of background as well. When the council asked me to meet, convene and meet a, a community group to determine how our city will use our opioid settlement money that is coming directly to the city, Wilsonville Community Sharing and Heart of the City were very active members of that group. That money, those monies are very small in comparison to this grant. And as we started to have those discussions, and both Lynn and Lee were very active in, in those meetings, we, we could not get past these priorities to talk about how we might spend the small portion of opioid settlement monies. So, when, and I, and I have to just give credit to our city attorney because this money became available and she kind of took the initiative to, to ask those folks to sit down and really kind of write and help write the, the grant proposal. And so, I, I just, I am just delighted because we, as a city, are not a social service agency. Rarely do we have the opportunity to provide funding for social service programs. And this is just a marriage of really a wonderful partnership that we are able to be the conduit for getting the funds out to the community. But it is Wilsonville Community Sharing and it is Heart of the City that do the, they do the work, and they are going to have to do the reporting. But they're doing so much of this right now and using their limited resources to provide these services, so it's not like it's new. So, I just really want to commend you for what you're doing for the city, for our citizens, and for those folks that are really in need of that extra help in order to even survive. So, thank you. And to Ms. Amanda Guile Hinman, thank you for taking this project on. As you said, it was, it's a little bit outside of the, the role of the city attorney, but I think, I think we have to give recognition to your writing skills because that's part of the package that you, the benefits that you bring to the city as well. So, thank you to all of you. I'm delighted to support this resolution without any concerns.
Thank you. Council President Ackerball?
Thank you. You know, I think, kind of piggybacking off of Counselor Dunwell's earlier comments, the, the last two years, I guess, I've been involved in the League of Oregon Cities Women's Caucus, which is a group of elected officials from all across the state of Oregon. And this topic is a hot topic, as you can imagine, for cities all across the state of Oregon, right? So, so you hear about what other cities are doing and what the different approaches might be and what the relationships look like. And I would say, from what I've heard from some of our other cities in the state, this is rare. And just watching you all present together, you feel the, the energy and care that you have and the collaboration that you have for each other, and that's, that's special and such a huge testament to all of you. Thank you so much. I mean, and it's, it's taking our city so very far, that collaboration. I know that it extends beyond just the, the three of you here too, so I want to, you know, include some other names, and I, I sure will probably be missing some people, but Brenda Evans, I know, has done terrific work with this as well. I know our first responders, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, Wilsonville Police, you know, there's many hands in this, Parks and Rec as well, our library, as you said, you know, there's, there's many people, and it really does feel that, you feel that rowing together and how far that will take you. So, just, just deep appreciation for, for all of you.
Well, thank you. Any other comments?
Just another great thank you.
Okay. So, having heard all the comments, I will call for the vote of this resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Another one that we all support.
On another note, I would just like to say on behalf of myself and Wilsonville Community Sharing, thank you, Councilors Ackerball and Linman and Mayor Linville and Mayor Julie. It's been a pleasure working with you guys these past couple years, and I look forward to seeing you guys in the future.
You will. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to Resolution Number 3121. If you'd read the title, please.
Resolution Number 3121, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the Frog Pond East and South Infrastructure Funding Plan.
We have a staff report with Mr. Polly and Ms. Pepper. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dan Polly, Planning Manager, with Amy Pepper, Development Engineering Manager. And this will be one of two items we speak with you about, the other one being ordinance 892, that are really two final regulatory policy pieces to come together for implementation of Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. So with these last two pieces, then really the, the policy and regulatory framework is set for development applications to start coming in for this area once certain infrastructure's in place for timing. But let's, so to start tonight, we're going to talk about the infrastructure funding plan, which is an important piece, figure out and lay the policy framework of how we're going to pay for the necessary infrastructure to construct the next part of our community out here. So what we'll touch on this evening is a bit of background and context, and then really get into an overview, which you've seen previously in a work session, about the assumptions made, what the strategy is, and, and really what we recommend for you this evening. So in terms of background, really just want to, this will apply to both, I won't go over this again in my later presentation, but when we talk about Frog Pond East and South, really where we're talking about, this is on the east side of our community, on either side of Advanced Road, on the east side of Stafford Road. Frog Pond East, when we talk about Frog Pond East, that's the north side of it, Advanced Road, and we're talking about Frog Pond South, we're talking about the south side around Meridian Creek Middle School. This work has been going on for some time. As you know, I, you've heard me say Frog Pond a lot over the last few years. So, I mean, this area was added to the UGB in 2018, following up on the previous area plan. And then this council adopted the master plan almost two years ago, next month it will be. And following up on that, there was, one of the implementation steps was an update to the transportation systems plan. And then these last two items this evening are the final couple pieces in that implementation effort. So, to lay some more context for the funding plan, it really needs to consider some unique aspects of both east and south. Particularly, east is large ownerships, the majority of the land is one of two ownerships. You have a large BPA power, Bonneville Power Line easement corridor through here. There's a lot of riparian areas and wetlands evolved. You have those frontages on the existing Stafford and Advanced Road. And a future thing is you'll have a commercial main street at Brisbane and Stafford, as well as a number of needs because of topography for sewer pump stations to serve different nodes of the area. For Frog Pond South is primarily coming off 60th Avenue, so to the east of Meridian Creek Middle School. Over in this area, the parcels, for the most part, are much smaller than you find in south, so that kind of chains the calculus of looking at funding and the future development pattern. Topography becomes a major aspect down here because essentially it go, it, from starting, Advanced Road is essentially the highest point. So anything that flows like water or sewer needs to go back, especially sewer needs to go back up to Advanced Road in order to flow to the rest of the city's infrastructure. So with that introduction, I will turn it over to Amy.
Good evening. So the, there's three types of infrastructure categories when we talk about infrastructure in our funding plans. There's off-site infrastructure, that's a couple of water line crossings, treatment plan upgrades, reservoirs, those are not part of the funding strategy and funding plan. There's also onsite infrastructure, that's the local streets and sidewalks and bike lanes, sewer mains, water mains, and stormwater management that comes in with development, that's also not part of the funding strategy. So the funding strategy covers what we call framework projects. That's Stafford Road, Advanced Road, 60th, just south of Advanced Road, a pump station in Frog Pond South, a storm main in Frog Pond South, and then some regional trails. So to put together the funding strategy, we had to come up with some assumptions around responsibilities was the first one. So, the first responsibility that we had made assumptions in the funding plan was a developer responsibility. responsibility. And that's for a half-street, the developer is responsible for 20 feet of pavement, a planter strip, five feet of a sidewalk, and then eight inches of water and sewer mains. Anything above that developer responsibility is considered the oversized portion and the city is responsible. Now, when I say developer responsibility, this is further analyzed with each development. We have to do proportionality analysis to come up, to comply with state and federal regulations. But for the funding strategy, these are the assumptions we made. And then we had to make some assumptions related to phasing. So in meeting with property owners and our development partners, we made some assumptions about when development would occur, so that we could kind of time the different infrastructure needs for when development would come online. So that's what this map shows for the next 20 years. There are some projects that are further out that may spur other develop, other projects, infrastructure at the same time, but this is when we anticipate development will occur. So the proposed funding plan before you tonight recommends that the council adopt our baseline funding strategy, which is a long-term funding plan that we've had here in the city where developer builds the infrastructure, the developer is responsible for their portion, paying for their portion, and the city is responsible for anything oversized. And the developer receives system development charge credits for, for that oversized portion. Again, this is a longstanding policy. We did the, the math behind it and we found that this works for, based on our assumptions. If the, if the timing of development happens with the infrastructure, we think it will work out, the SDC credits will be available to meet the developers' needs. But again, our funding strategy is based on a lot of assumptions and we don't have a clear crystal ball of what will happen, so our funding plan also includes a number of alternatives that we would evaluate depending on the timing of the project and the needs of the infrastructure at that time. And there's a full list and I think it's important that we keep these all in the funding plan so that we have the flexibility in the future, when development comes along, that we can partner with our development partners to make sure the infrastructure is built when it's needed with development.
With that, we recommend this adoption and happy to answer any questions you have.
Let's see. Councillor.
Thank you. As I recall, we, there was some discussion about the use of the SDC credits. Are there, are there constraints or limitations on the location in which those credits can be used?
Currently, SDC credits have to be used by the developer that does the work, so they construct it and they get the SDC credit. If they choose to, sometimes they want to sell it or they sell the project and they can't use it because they're no longer developing, there is a reduction in the, the value of that SDC credit currently in our code. And I believe that's a 50% reduction. 25%, sorry.
Thank you.
Councillor Dunwell.
Oh, okay. I was. Everybody assumes I'm always going to say something. You're on the stage. Actually, I know we went through this in detail during our work sessions, so I appreciate, I'll just say that I appreciate all the effort and, gosh, Dan, we're going to just miss you coming in all of these work sessions and talking to us through all of this, so. But I do want to say one thing, what's so interesting about Frog Pond South is the issues that we have with some of those other property owners. I mean, there are a lot of properties out there that are large acreages and those are not being annexed, correct? Those are not going to be part of the city.
Those outside that.
Yeah, they're right outside, right? They're right outside. So, and some of them are brand new. So it's a, we're going to find ourselves down the road in a really interesting place just because there are some very large properties out there. Will they benefit from any of this as far as under, you know, sewers or underground utilities or anything like that?
So, I mean, obviously they'll have parks and some other amenities closer to them and easily more, probably even walkable for them. But those areas outside this, that, outside this UGB addition from 2018 are in rural reserve, so they're not anticipated to be urbanized in the next number of decades, at least, so.
So, are there any more clarifying questions? This is a very large packet, we've been through it. You gave the number of work sessions dozens of times, basically. Okay, so seeing, hearing no other clarifying questions, I will ask for the motion and a second and then for discussion. May I have a motion on the resolution? Would you like to do that, Councillor Linville?
I would be delighted.
I did, too. I would, Your Honor, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 3121. Is there a second? Motion's been moved by Councillor Linville and seconded by Councillor Berry. Is there any discussion?
If I, if I could, I think, I think one of the slides that's important here, first, well, let me preface this by saying, the infrastructure for our areas to be developed doesn't just happen. And we, I think, have a history of doing, modifying how we fund infrastructure for different areas in, in our city. Over time, we've done some different things. And I, I think we recognize that, that when the developer pays the system development charges, which are what the SDCs are, we sometimes just use those acronyms and we forget that, what they really are, that it has implications for the cost of housing. And, but it, there's such a balance between how does the city provide the infrastructure, the, all of the needs, the roads, the sewer, the water, the electricity, all of the things that are required for housing to happen. And so I think this is a really thoughtful plan for us to do it, but I also wanted to draw attention to the slide that we're looking out, sometimes our citizens think, oh my goodness, we're going to put all of these thousands of homes and people into our community and how will we ever accommodate them all? And it's important to note that this plan goes out to 2045. So, we are in, we are needing to do the planning now to be able to accommodate that building in the future. And this is an opportunity for us to do it in a very thoughtful way, in a comprehensive way, so we don't end up with portions of these areas that don't have the kind of infrastructure that are needed for citizens to have a good quality of life. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I will, I will add that it's, this is, this is, you know, when we think about going to visit somebody in Wilsonville in the various neighborhoods, think about the historical, the presentation that we just had from the Historical Society. And whether it's the Orchards neighborhood or River Green, Meadows, Beaubois, all the different neighborhoods, including Frog Pond West, which has already got houses in it. Of course, those were not neighborhoods in the days of those pictures that we looked at today. And these, these neighborhoods that have developed over all these 50, 60 years of Wilsonville's existence have made a place for people to live who want to have some of the best schools in the state of Oregon. And it's, those people are living here in Wilsonville because we have houses for them to live in. And we have some of the best parks in Wilsonville. We have very well-maintained streets. Unfortunately, the last four years, we've been building and maintaining a lot of those streets. I knew that coming into this, it was a time to do a lot of streets. But because, because of all this planning, we do have places for people to live who go to our schools. And I'm really glad that since 2015, and actually before that, that was 2015, as you see in the staff report, when the Frog Pond Area Plan was adopted for the whole 500 acres. And we've been through many iterations of this and as I said, Frog Pond West is building out now. And we've also had a lot of changes in state law and in our economic situation around the world and in Oregon. And so what we're going to see in these two neighborhoods is an opportunity for people at various stages of their lives and various needs for a smaller home or a larger home, a town home, single-family home. Or maybe it's the first time they've owned a house and they might be looking at middle housing, cottage cluster, you know, all these things that we've talked about that give people that opportunity. So we have the opportunity for that, but it's going to take a while for it to get started because we have to start building the infrastructure. And, and the last comment I will make is, some communities are starting to see their school populations decrease and even close by to us. And one of the reasons has been stated that the parents, people who are parents of young children, need more options for housing costs. And so if your community doesn't have those options, they will go other places. And I also read this weekend, there have been many articles about this, that Oregon has one of the lowest birth rates in the country. And I read, this is a quote from an article quoting the former state economist, who was saying that he's, in his mind, it's not up to him, but he's hoping that as, as more housing choices come available and as hopefully inflation goes down, we will be seeing people wanting to take that leap and have more children. I certainly hope we do because a complete community has families and has children and has people who want to fund the school bonds and have the most excellent schools so that the community works. And we all need that. So that's why I'm voting for this plan. With that, oh, please, Councillor.
Just to take on, that was so well said, but also so that the people who are working here have a place to live.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Several years ago, the council unanimously adopted the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And that, that looked at our community and talked about how could we have more equitable housing? And one of the passages in, in that report underscores just what you said, Councillor Berry, and, and they go on to say that when, when corporations and businesses and some high pay, some with high-paying wages, all types of different corporations, even if they have six-figure and greater wages, will, when they look to expand, one of the things that will, is very important in their decision is, is there going to be housing for this workforce? Should we expand here or should we go someplace else? Should we locate our new plant in Wilsonville or should we go to another state or another place? And so I think this housing choices that we've done over all these decades, last 50 or 60 years with all of our neighborhoods together has, I must be part of a contributing factor to our significant private sector payroll across our city. Yep.
Mayor, before you vote, can I, while I have staff here.
Yes.
This has been a very long process and not without conflict. I just want to acknowledge the efforts of Amy, Dan, Chris Namso, Miranda Batshill, our city attorney, but also on the other side, I see the face of West Hill's Development back there, he's been in quite a few meetings. So this has been a, it has been at times confrontational, but I think we've all gotten to the place where we understand that infrastructure is extremely expensive and there really are no easy answers. I wish that the state, who has this desire to have more housing, would come to the table with something other than just mandates because we have limited options available to us. So, I do want to acknowledge that this is a two-way street and the development community is an important partner, always has been in the city. So we thank you for your investment in the city and we look forward to working with you. And maybe just end with a quote from Churchill, "Now is not the end, it is not even the beginning of the end, but it is perhaps the end of the beginning." So there you go.
I also want to thank the members of our Planning Commission, going back many years, one of whom is here tonight. So they've put in many, many, many hours as well. So thank you. Brian, I appreciate you saying that. So with that, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to our public hearing for Ordinance Number 892. The city attorney will please read the title.
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 892, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting amendments to Chapter 4, Chapter 6, and Chapter 8 of the Wilsonville Code to implement the Frog Pond East and South Master Plan and make related updates to residential development regulations citywide. Mayor, do you, you, you want to do your instruction?
Sorry, I think I've been doing this for too long. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider on first reading for Ordinance Number 892. This comes to us at a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, but you want to ensure you have legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. Since this is a legal process for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and address for the public record. The public hearing is now open. We'll now have the staff presentation with Mr. Polly.
Thank you. Again, Dan Polly, Planning Manager, and good to be here to talk about Frog Pond East and South one more time, for now at least. I appreciate, I appreciate that quote from Churchill. So I would announce that, first of all, that tonight's public hearing is a continuation of a hearing from August 5th that was necessitated by Planning Commission's decision to continue their hearing. Also, that the criteria applicable to the application can be found in Exhibit E to the ordinance, which has been entered into the record. I'd like to echo the thank yous that have already been put out there this evening, particularly Planning Commission and city council that have sat through a lot of work sessions. Thank you. Also, a great consultant team that supported the code editing, testing and researching, all my fellow staff and others, stakeholders and others that have been involved to really, I'll highlight really, this, we're looking for similar results to prior master plans, but the, the regulatory environment is different. So we had to take a different approach than we've taken in the past. So that has taken additional vetting and working through than some prior code edits. And it's been an interesting process. And it's been an interesting process and really impressed with all this collaboration, what, what result has come. So with that, what I wanted to hit on, since you've heard this a lot, I won't belabor it too much, but wanted to hit on the public involvement, really the Planning Commission's work, a bit of background that's most pertinent, and then a brief overview of the proposed code amendments, which will divide those that are particular to Frog Pond East and South. Also, there's a portion that applies to residential development citywide that really the impetus was East and South, but it's similarly applicable citywide. So the proposal is to apply it citywide. So the key in our public involvement was honoring all the public involvement that happened with the master plan. But then, again, there's all those work sessions we were able to have that, including a Planning Commission, those were open for public comment. We met a lot with stakeholders, as, as has been previously noted, as well as our regular online outreach and public notices. Planning Commission really did a great thorough review. I also want to acknowledge, as some of the council, a number of you were on the Development Review Board and previously reviewed developments, including residential development, but our Planning Commission has some great experience that they brought, understanding how the code functions, how those hearings function, and how, how the application of the different code works. So this rich understanding of all these different issues and the public comments really helped them give us guidance as, as we put this together, and it ended in their unanimous recommendation for adoption by council. I will note a couple of aspects, those in Chapter 6 and 8, they did not review because it's not under their purview. However, they're related to the Chapter 4 Development Code Amendments that they did review. I'll hit, it's a couple of things from the master plan. Land use variety, especially housing variety, was a major component of the master plan. This will look familiar to you. You have this transective form, the darker brown on this slide, the brown here that feathers out to less urban form. There's a wide variety of housing throughout those different colors. And also, we have this commercial Main Street area that's a mixed-use residential commercial area at Brisbane, at Stafford Road. Something that found interesting, and this is highlighted in more detail in your, in the findings report, is that the comparison between Villabon and Frog Pond East and South. It was a different regulatory approach out of necessity, but end results are anticipated to be amazingly similar in terms of the housing variety, the amount of multifamily, well, the amount of small units, the amount of detached homes, and the amount of middle housing, which gives us confidence in this approach, that it is doable, it is feasible. And we've, we've been testing it and we're, we look forward to seeing it implemented. Another key aspect of the master plan was around housing, as you know, but also particularly housing affordability. And there's two approaches highlighted in the master plan. The first one is, is really around market rate housing to require targeted unit types to provide lower-cost market options. These include middle housing and small units, which are, are defined as 1,200 square foot, square feet and less in the code. The second part is to make sure there's not those regulatory barriers that may prevent partnerships with nonprofits or others to build below-market housing in the future. In the master plan, and also as reflected in the code, there's some key state and regional requirements. Metro, when the land was added to the urban growth boundary in 2018, they set a minimum number of housing units that had to be planned for. They required that middle housing be allowed wherever detached single families are allowed, family homes are allowed. They, they required us to encourage ADUs as well as disallow the covenants and restrictions from limiting housing types more than the zoning does. A couple of these, subsequently in the 2019 legislature, there were laws passed that actually reinforced these same ideas on a statewide level that you're likely familiar with through our middle housing in Wilsonville project. With that, let's go into the actual code amendments, starting with all the work we did to implement housing variety. Started by establishing geographies, what we call sub-districts, is the main geography we're using. And for each of these geographies, we set a minimum number of units. We divide out that 1,325 by geography. And then those target units for each geography, we, we established a minimum number of those types of units for each geography, either the sub-district or when there's tax lot, multiple tax lots within a sub-district, we break it down for each tax lot. So it's very clear to future developers, what is the minimum they need to build. Another component of this variety is that for each of these geographic areas, no more than 60% of the land can be used to build a single unit type. So that makes sure that wherever you are, that close by, there's, there's variety. And there's those options for different stages of life and different economic needs. And supporting that are the design standards. Generally, we look to use standards that were established where we could, either in Frog Pond West or citywide. And so what you find for the design standards, including like architecture and things like that, are a combination of things that are particular to Frog Pond, but primarily are things that apply citywide that we adopted when, when we adopted citywide design standards with the middle housing project. Development standards also generally follow what's been used in other zones in the city. They do vary by urban, by those urban form colors to really drive that, the different look and feel of the different areas. I will highlight a few that are different or, or fairly unique. One is the minimum lot size is tied to other standards than being an independent standard that can, can conflict with other standards. So if you can meet the rest of the standards, then that establishes your lot size. Also, front setbacks are based on streets. So if you're on a certain street, the setbacks are uniform on that street to provide uniformity along the street and a better kind of look and feel, as well as help with a softer transition between different urban forms. Also, to differentiate between the different urban forms, we're, we establish a standard called maximum building width, with the more urban, urban form being allowed to have wider buildings. And then as you get kind of, the less urban, urban form, you have more narrow buildings allowed. Parks and open space generally follows what the standards are citywide, with some specifics from the master plan about having what we call a green focal point or really a green space or, or plaza that's accessible in each of the different sub-districts, as well as some specifically planned parks called out in the master plan. Other public realm elements such as streetlights and street trees are, refer back and directly implemented from the master plan in this code. We have our Main Street standards, which we adapted and simple, did a simplified adaptation of the Town Center Zone standards to apply for this block that's mixed-use commercial. That includes a requirement that 50% of the ground floor is built as commercial, which is consistent with other commercial zones in the city. We'll highlight that some recent changes we worked with on, with the Planning Commission on is around waivers, which is the process by which someone can get an exception or an adjustment to the various standards. Two changes here, first of all, we made the allowance to do it earlier, for those of you that are familiar with the DRB process during a Stage 1 rather than a Stage 2. But essentially, the, the concept there is allowing it earlier allows more certainty as a developer does more detailed design and that, so when they're investing money, they have more certainty in those designs. Also, added more language for Frog Pond East and South, when waivers are being considered by the Development Review Board, what are really the criteria, details of the criteria and factors to consider? Because oftentimes, our DRB members give us feedback in the past that, okay, you want to grant a waiver, but we don't really have anything to weigh it on. And so we, we tried to help that, both for our decision-makers and the developers to know what to address. So moving on to citywide code amendments, significant one is changing to adopting design standards for multifamily housing. And with that, simplifying and kind of right-sizing and aligning the review of architecture in the immediate site around multifamily buildings to be consistent with detached homes and middle housing in the city. So which means if it's up to six units, so the building's a similar bulk as a larger detached home or middle housing, then that goes through the same Class 1 process as other housing. If it is a larger structure, it goes through kind of a compromise, I'd say, a Class 2 process where there's still notice to the neighbors, but it's reviewed by staff. We still do review, as we do with all types of residential development, kind of the functional layout or the subdivision design still goes to Development Review Board, as does the plat and design of required open spaces such as parks. But what is being shifted to staff for administrative review is at the actual architectural design of buildings based on the standards that have been adopted by the city, as well as design of the landscaping, you know, like the shrubs and grass immediately around the building that's not part of the required open space. Consistent with Metro's requirement and efforts the city has been making, we've also adjusted some standards around accessory dwelling units. The first of these is around what type of other units are eligible for accessory dwelling units. Currently, townhouses in order to be eligible have to meet a minimum lot size, recommending removing that minimum lot sizes. So all townhouses, regardless of their lot size, are now eligible for ADUs. So that could include like the three-story townhouses with a ground floor ADU. Review process, there was kind of a redundant process, still a no-notice, essentially did the same process twice under our current code. So that's been simplified where it goes through the same administrative review process of other similar housing, all other middle housing or detached homes. Setbacks are, for ADUs are kind of unified across the different zones to be the same as cottage clusters, so that, that we're making sure that those setbacks are not inadvertently a barrier to ADU development. Another major item that we included is to make development more streamlined and more thoughtful is residential stormwater design standards. And I will get to my notes on this one, give me just a moment. So the big picture here is that the new design standards reflect our current public work standards, but they aim to better integrate stormwater facilities into development, both in terms of the actual design and layout, but also in terms of process. So as it's better integrated into the process and developers are thinking about it throughout the process, as they're designing the rest of the subdivision, it's better integrated into the actual site plan and layout. We want to ensure it's not an afterthought, but fully considered during site planning. We've taken the last few months to continue to vet the standards with the development stakeholders and various city staff involved in stormwater, and are pleased with the results of these clear and objective standards that will support an important aspect of the city's design and infrastructure. A big aspect is, is that concept of low-impact development. And this, sometimes it's thought of just having like rain gardens, but it's also a design principle that you're really thinking about having the stormwater flow similar to pre-development, how it did pre-development. Also, setting clear prioritization of where stormwater facilities should be located, so that's clear for both the developer and the reviewers as, as this comes in. Identifying conflicting design elements, because oftentimes these are competing for the same space such as in planner strips and such as, like how do you prioritize streetlights or street trees versus stormwater swells? Making that clear. And finally, establishing the waiver process, which is the technical review by the city engineer, as established under the authority in Chapter 8. So that's that small edit in Chapter 8 of the code, versus being a planned development waiver, that kind of broader waiver process by the Development Review Board. Finally, other citywide proposals that I'll mention is, we talked, as the council knows quite a bit, about this narrow access, this access for narrow fenced side yards. So we've made it clear to try to make those usable and well-maintained, including amendments to our nuisance code to support that maintenance. We added preventing CCNRs from limiting housing beyond zoning. This is current state law. This is what we've been applying, but it makes, makes sure our code aligns with that state law. And finally, we've edited our general site design review standards to make it clear that if you're following these residential design standards that we've developed, that you don't go through the design review, site design review process through the Development Review Board. So with that, I'll stop talking about Frog Pond East and South and happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Council, this is a time for clarifying questions, and later after the motion, we'll make some comments. Council President Ockervall.
Um, one, one question for you.
Sure.
Thanks, thanks for the presentation. You mentioned in the presentation that structures that have up to six units, correct, will go through the Class 1. Can you talk a little bit more about what the benefit for that shift is?
Yeah, so these are, it's really aligns with what the expectation is. I mean, this is where, again, is the architecture of the buildings, not whether or not there's going to be residential development there. And we have standards about, you know, how, how much articulation you have to have every so many feet, so very clear standards. So it's really a check-the-box type review. So taking it to a hearing sometimes really sets false expectations that there's actually something to say at the hearing when it's really a check-in-the-box. There's not really, if someone doesn't like it, if it checks the box, it's still, we're obligated by law to approve it. So kind of aligns with that concept in that we want to set expectations and get the input at the correct part of the process. And if there, have that option always to, if they don't want to follow those clear and objective standards, they can always opt into going through a public review process. But we, we've kind of agreed on a community, these are design standards that all residential properties should comply with. And so we want to make it easy and clear for, for that approval and make it consistent across all development types for ease, for both to be development, to be streamlined in our review, but also to be fair and legal.
Right, and, and make it clear for the community members where there is legal, I don't know, ability to.
Influence, yeah.
Yeah, influence and where there isn't. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
On that same note, and a couple of the other places in the many pages where in your presentation where we talked about streamlining the process and being very clear about what is, what is expected. Can you talk a little bit about how, both what Council President Ockervall was just asking about with the Class 1 reviews and other streamlining, especially regard, how that could help reduce the time required and the red tape and basically the cost of building houses if there's less time required going in and out of hearings? What effect that has?
Sure, so something to keep in mind in terms of the development process, and I'm sure our development community speak more about this, but, you know, it's expected that you're going to lay out streets and, and your lots kind of differently based on the topography and this, and your block size and other considerations. But when it comes to the actual going vertical, you want to know that as soon as possible so you can do the structural engineering of that home and know that maybe something that you have already had designed and spent the money to have designed can go on that lot. You don't want to have to spend the time and money to customize it based on, on, on unknown standards.
Like changing goalposts or something.
Changing goalposts that may come up in like a public review. So that's why we have standards that have been fully vetted. We've had professional architects advise us and really done a lot of studies about what really makes the look and feel of our different neighborhoods in terms of architecture and make sure that those types of elements are incorporated in a reasonable way that doesn't. those types of elements are incorporated in a reasonable way that doesn't unduly increase costs across all of our different residential types of buildings.
Thank you. Let's see, do you have your hand up? Is that you? Okay. Well, seeing no further questions, Council President Ockervall, may I have a motion on the ordinance?
I think we have public hearing.
Sorry, we have the hearing. So for public testimony, we will start with the people who signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. Staff, if people have signed up in advance, who is our first person to testify? Do we have anyone on Zoom or the phone? Okay. Does any counselor need anything clarified? Oh, we already did that? We have no people testifying. So seeing no further questions from the council, I do want to ask if the staff has anything further to add to the record at this time.
Nothing further. Unless any of my other colleagues do. No.
All right. Hearing no further questions, and seeing no one wishing to testify, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 9:25 PM. It is now time for the council to consider the ordinance on first reading. May I have a motion on the ordinance?
I move to adopt ordinance number eight-nine-two on first reading.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Council President has moved, Councilor Linville has seconded. Is there any discussion? Council President Ockervall.
I just wanted to make a note that in our packet included, I mean, we joke, but we don't joke, that we've had many, many meetings on this. Specifically, we have had 11 work sessions on this, and Planning Commission has had 13 meetings on this. So a tremendous amount of work has gone into the hundreds and hundreds of pages. And the reason I think that we, that it is so long and that we've had so many meetings is because there's a lot of detail that has gone into this ordinance, but also, there's been a huge effort to be really careful and thoughtful on how this might play out, how we can try and steer the future, which, you know, earlier we heard, we don't have a crystal ball, that's true, we don't have a crystal ball, but how can we steer it to the best interests for Wilsonville as a whole, and just creating communities that will be healthy as a whole, and a city that will be healthy as a whole. So I wanted to thank everyone for the tremendous amount of work that has gone into getting us to this point tonight, from our Planning Commission, from city council members, from staff, from the stakeholders that have contributed. And this work has been influenced, you know, we've talked about many other different projects like the equitable housing strategic plan, I mean, it's been influenced by many different facets of what the city does overall. So a big thank you to everyone that has been involved in making this lift.
Thank you. Counselor Linville.
Thank you. Mr. Pauli, I want to recognize the amount of work that you've done, and the staff, and Amanda as the director. This has been an incredible amount of work, although it's reflected in 206 pages in our packet for these amendments. It probably was three times that amount in pages that have been tossed as the changes have been made over time. And I really wanted to recognize that and appreciate that this planning has taken the opportunity to look at our city code, previous city code in those chapters, so that we're not looking at just an isolated area, but how can we take advantage of some of the improvements and the study that has been done to actually improve the rest of our code? So thank you for that work as well. So it goes farther than just Frog Pond, Frog Pond East and South, so congratulations. This will be the last one, right?
I think my comment will be that Council President Ockervall and Counselor Linville said it very well, so I won't add a lot of time. I will concur on all those points, and again, thank our planning director, Miranda Bateschel, our community services director, Chris Namsoo, and Dan Pauli, and many of the, so many people over the years who have worked on this. So seeing no further comments, it has been, I will now call for a vote on the motion. So those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? The motion passes five-zero. That is another one, that after all of that work and everyone's input being considered, we voted unanimously because of all the time taken. We now come to city managers, oh no, we now come to our public hearing, you can see that I'm really tired. And the first one in the public hearing is ordinance number eight-nine-two, if you would please read the title.
Eight-nine-six. So Mayor
Oh, you know, I'm reading this older printed copy.
Okay.
So eight, it still has this other one, eight-nine-six.
Yes, so ordinance number eight-nine-six and eight-nine-seven are related, and as the council knows from the packet of materials, we're looking for a motion to continue, so I'm going to read the titles of both. This is the first reading of ordinance number eight-nine-six, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville annexing approximately nine acres of property located at 7400 Southwest Frog Pond Lane for development of a 28-lot residential subdivision. And this is the first reading of ordinance number eight-nine-seven, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the Clackamas County Rural Residential Farm Forest Five-Acre RRFF-F-five Zone to the Residential Neighborhood RN Zone on approximately nine acres located at 7400 Southwest Frog Pond Lane for development of a 28-lot residential subdivision.
Thank you. We have a staff report on this?
So we are continuing this due to Planning Commission, sorry, Development Review Board not taking action on it yet. We have a date certain of January sixth.
Yes, and for anyone making a motion, I would just point to the language in the staff report for a motion to continue the public hearing for ordinance numbers eight-nine-six and eight-nine-seven to a date and time certain of January sixth, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
And we'll be voting on those separately.
You can vote on the motion to continue.
Together?
Yeah.
Okay. So Council President Ockervall, would you like to make that motion, please?
I move to continue the public hearing for ordinance numbers eight-nine-six and eight-nine-seven to a date and time certain of January sixth, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
I will second, but I have a question, does not the hearing have to be opened before we can have a motion to continue?
It doesn't need to be open, it's just continuing the matter to that time, so we'll do, we'll set the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. No. Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Now, we will go to city managers' business.
Ninety-nine point nine percent is in the back of your packet in the monthly managers' report. The other point one is to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for calling attention to the city managers' report, which is packed with information from your department ads. Hope people read it, because it's very good. Legal business.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
We're ready to, we are going to now adjourn the meeting.
Yes, and just to announce that we will be heading back into executive session following the adjournment.
Yes, we did not have time to finish our executive session, so we will reconvene an executive session after the adjournment of the regular meeting. Meeting is adjourned, 9:34 PM.